River, and I am glad to hear him today. Reverend, may we hear the good word?
Good morning, everybody. Thank you all for inviting me. Thank you for having me. Let us pray. Eternal God, we've come this morning to say first, say thank you for allowing us to see another day, allowing us to see a new month. We pray right now for each council person represented on this council floor. We thank you for their families. We ask that you would bless their comings and their goings. We ask that you would continue to keep them in good health, good strength, keep them encouraged in times of lows and strengthen them where they're weak, build them up where they may be torn down. But most importantly, we ask that you would continue to bind them together. They may not always see eye to eye below. We ask that you would always let them be on one accord. Let them do things decent and pleasing in your sight to impact this great city of Tampa. We thank you for their service up until this very present moment, and we ask that you would continue to lead and guide them in the direction that you would have them to go. We thank you for all things. We thank you for allowing us yet another opportunity to come and meet on the affairs of this city, the impact throughout, to touch all the lives that may be impacted, no matter what it may be. We thank you. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you all again for having me.
Thank you. Enjoy your day. Next up, if you are able to stand, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Vera.
Here.
Goode's.
Here.
Carlson.
Here.
Ding Felder.
Glad to be here.
Citro.
Yes, I'm here. Thank you.
Miranda.
Here.
And Maniscalco.
Here.
All right.
Thank you.
Before we go to the approval of the agenda, Mr. Shelby?
Yes, good morning. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good morning, members of Tampa City Council. Martin Shelby, City Council Attorney. Today is Thursday, October 1st, 2020, and this 9:00 AM meeting, this virtual meeting of the City Council, is being held in accordance with the declarations and provisions of the Governor's Executive Order 20-69, as extended and amended just yesterday afternoon by Executive Order 20-20-246. It is also being governed by the emergency rules of procedure as adopted and amended by the Tampa City Council. It is being conducted this morning by audio teleconferencing only with video presentations, remote participation, which is referred to by the state of Florida statutes and rules as communication media technology, or CMT. The public and the citizens of the city of Tampa are able to watch, listen, and view this meeting on cable TV, on Spectrum Channel 640 and Frontier Channel 15, and on the Internet at tappagov.net/live, one word, and on the city of Tampa's Facebook page. There are ways that the public has been able to communicate, and that is available for your instruction by visiting the City Council's website at tappagov.net/city-council. That includes submitting the Internet or web, includes voicemail by regular mail, and also the opportunity to speak remotely during public comment. Now, for those individuals who don't have CMT, a device, they have access to one that they are able to use by visiting the Tampa Convention Center during this meeting at 333 South Franklin Street at the channel entrance. Public comments, pre-recorded and live, will be heard at the start of the meeting at the direction of City Council. Comments that are specific to a specific public hearing on the agenda will be heard at the time when it appears on the agenda. The written comments have been distributed to Council and are being made a part of the record of this meeting. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, sir. With the approval of the agenda and the addendum to the agenda, a couple of things. Councilman Ding Felder did request that Items 15, 22, and 23 be pulled for discussion. The Chief of Staff requested that 19, Item Number 19, be moved to staff reports, and that Item Number 55, we received a continuance early this morning, that it be continued to October 15th. And then we have from Morris Massey, a written report on Item Number 59. You should have a copy of the addendum. Are there any questions?
Mr. Chairman, yes, Martin Shelby, please. Just a reminder that City Council, when you adopt the addendum, it doesn't adopt the items on the addendum, it just places those items on the agenda. So for instance, Item 55 cannot be taken up until the time of the public hearing. And I believe Ms. McLean is going to actually update Council on that when that item does come up. So just a reminder of that, Council, and if there are any other additions, deletions, substitutions, this would be the time to do that. And also, Mr. Chairman, I don't know whether you wish to discuss with Council the need for staff to appear during staff reports, or they can just be received and filed, those reports. I don't know whether you want to take that up now or after this item.
Sure, we'll take it up. Do we need staff present for any of the items that I brought up or anything else that you see on the agenda? Any council member need any staff present? I know memos were sent out. Are you happy with those, or do you need them for any items?
Mr. Chairman?
Is that Councilman Ding Felder?
Yes, sir. Good morning.
Go ahead. Good morning.
Yes, and I've notified Chief Bennett, as well as staff, for items specifically for Item 2, which I did not pull because it's an ordinance for first reading. But for 2, 15, 22, and 23, I'd like staff present. Mr. Chairman, if you would like to defer those items, those four items to the end, so we can get through our regular agenda, and then, because those four items will take a little bit longer, because I do have some questions.
All right, we'll do that.
22, 23.
All right, so all the items pulled that I brought up, and Item Number 2, if we can move that to the end of the agenda, so we can get through everything. Was that a second from Councilman Goode? I said that. Okay, all right. All right, let's get a motion to approve the agenda and the addendum.
Motion to approve.
We have a second from Councilman Goode's. We have a second from Councilman Miranda. Any opposed? All right, hearing known by unanimous consent, without any objection, we have approved the agenda and the addendum. All right.
And Mr. Chair, if I may, Mr. Chair, Vera?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. For the apprenticeship item towards the end, Ms. Zelman was going to speak briefly. I wouldn't call it a presentation, but I do believe she was going to speak briefly, just FYI, if I may, in that regard. I wouldn't call it a presentation, but just speak briefly. Thank you, sir.
That's fine. That's fine. Anybody else? All right, no ceremonial activities today. We will go to public comment. Madam Clerk, I believe we have two registered speakers.
That is correct, sir.
All right, go ahead.
All right, the first speaker is Chris Vella.
Morning, Council. This is Chris Vella. I'm calling from zip code 33605 in the Ybor area. I was actually calling in regards to Item 2, as the agenda was presented prior to this meeting, and I am just a little concerned about decisions that will be made on pushing or extending the timeline to exempt the multimodal transportation impact fee. I think what Council needs to know is the fiscal damages or the benefits of having this tax and not having this tax. And I would urge you all to go far back and ask city administration, whoever handles this, to look back in 2010 to see how much money has been passed up. Now, as to my understanding, this transportation impact fee does go towards sidewalks and bicycle and pedestrian facilities on city-owned roads. So I urge you that when we are assessing this fee in the future, that we don't just count cars. So if we have a large building, we should also assess fees on how we can have more bicycle access or more transit access. A perfect example is right next to you at City Hall, is the HRI property. Now, you can go on Marion Street and see that there's no direct access to that bus line. You can walk down Marion Street, and you can see a lot of those buildings don't have direct access to the bus line. So I'm very concerned where this is going. So let's put this on pause. Let's look at the fiscal analysis of this, and also, let's look at ways of how East Tampa and Ybor City could have a little bit more control, because I have a feeling that these fees probably end up going into a trust, a general trust, where anybody can disperse it as pleased. So I would like to have a little bit more control over that funding, so that way, East Tampa and Ybor City can have a choice as to how to make their streets safer, and also to meet specific Vision Zero goals that our mayor is pushing. Also, I would also bring up that the city is giving away alleys. I understand that when developers want to accumulate alleys as part of redevelopment, rezoning, and so forth, yeah, there's a big fee to review that from the city, but the city is bleeding money with not selling those alleys to the people who are going to include them in their new property. So it's very important that city's real estate gets involved and sells alley. Now, I support alleys. I want them in our city, but you guys are giving them away, and we're losing a lot of money. And this is so important because we might not have that surtax, and we got two constitutional amendments right now that are, that can extend the homestead exemption. So we're not going to have a lot of local money. So please ask important questions. We need to keep our neighborhoods functioning and open to all access. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. All right, next speaker?
Yes, the next speaker is Mr. James Ransom. If you could hear me, please unmute your line.
Mr. Ransom?
Mr. Ransom, please unmute yourself.
All right, is that better?
Yes, we can hear you. Go ahead, sir.
Okay, good morning. Am I coming in as a... on my phone or on my computer at this point?
I hear you. Madam Clerk, is there any... is he logged in through the GoToWebinar?
Yes, it looks like he's logged in.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much. This is my first time calling in on this format. Mr. Chair and council members, on behalf of the Tampa Organization of Black Affairs, Toba, and our Saturday Morning Breakfast Group, we wanted to take a moment to thank you. Mr. Chair, I'm not sure you got my request for some additional time, but I'll try to keep it short. I just wanted to thank you on behalf of our organization on your recent unanimous vote to support a resolution, reconciliation resolution. We thought that your action there was certainly historic, in our view, and goes a long way to set the foundation for addressing many of the systemic problems that are faced by blacks in Tampa and around the country as it relates to unemployment and exclusion and injustice, and a lot of other things that you all recognized in the resolution and with the commission that you're forming. So we wanted to thank you. Thank, in particular, we want to thank Councilmember Goode's for the leadership on that particular item. We wanted to thank also Councilmember Ding Felder and Councilmember Maniscalco, and also Bill Carlson, and all the full council members for your support in rejecting contracts that come to City Council from the administration that do not include specific goals, actual spending goals for black-owned companies, among others. We think that also helps to add a layer of transforming how we do business for everyone by race and gender. And we also want to acknowledge and thank the mayor and her executive team for responding to your request to have no contracts come $100,000 or above without specifically indicating how money's going to be spent with black-owned companies, among others. You know, we've been there many years, dealing with this issue through the ordinance process, and we're meeting with the city of Tampa administration on policies and procedures and practices to help provide some input, since we've been doing this kind of thing for 41 years. So my call this morning on behalf of our organization is to thank you for your leadership and for showing respect to the African-American community, to black people in Tampa. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, sir. All right, do we have anybody else for public comment?
No, sir. That would conclude the public comment portion of the agenda. There is no one available at the Tampa Convention Center, and there are no recordings this morning.
All righty. Are there any reconsideration of legislative matters? Are requests by the public? Hearing none. I had to ask. All right, we go to committee reports. We begin the agenda with Item Number 1. We have an ordinance for first reading. Item Number 1. Who is here for Item Number 1?
Good morning, Chair and Council. Apologies. This is Vic Bidae, Director, Mobility Department, to address Item Number 1. Item Number 1 is an amendment to the City Code, Chapter 15, Section 15-81. In essence, what we're doing is expanding the hours at which we can operate and charge for parking within our facilities and expanding them to 24 hours a day, seven days a week. The reason we're doing this and that we're proposing is, and you will hear this theme with the rates as well, that we're trying to be more demand-responsive and a little more nimble. So in areas like Ybor City, for example, in the garages, we can charge at night, after midnight, when there's a lot of activity on weekends. And the same in downtown, where currently in certain areas, we exempt parking charges after 6:00 PM, and we want the flexibility to, again, be more demand-responsive. Sometimes we have events that go past midnight as well, and this is in the spirit of being fair and efficient.
All right. Are there any questions from council members?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Councilman Goode's.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much for your leadership. Just one or two questions. The proposed changes, would that include the parking garages as well?
Yes, sir. It includes the parking garages as well. This basically just provides flexibility to the parking division to assess the best times to charge for parking.
And my second question for you, I know we had a brief discussion on it, but I'm still concerned. I know a lot of our city employees who do work downtown have come to me and expressed their concern in reference to some of our other employees who do not work downtown, who work at other facilities, don't have to have that assessment to pay in our parking garages and so forth and so on. So I wonder, have we totally addressed that issue with the HR or the administration, because that's a concern of mine. If I have an employee who's working downtown, and they're picking their pay to pay for parking every day versus another employee who is not paying any fees because they're in an off-site area that has appropriate parking or at another facility?
Councilman, I understand your concern. That is more of a bargaining unit item than it is about our ability to charge different user types, because per statute, we have to treat within the same category users the same. So it's not something we would be able to facilitate through parking operations or policy necessarily. It would be more of a bargaining unit item, but I do believe that this will be looking into it.
Thank you, sir.
All right, any other... Councilman Ding Felder?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I am a little confused, because I thought, by looking at the title of Item 1, I thought it was just dealing with parking meters out on the street. Ms. Zelman, can you clarify a little bit, because I'm having trouble pulling up the full text of that ordinance for Number 1? Is that dealing with the parking garages? Because if it is, I'd like to defer that, defer this vote until we have a discussion about 22, which is also the parking lots.
So, Councilman, my apologies, but you are right. It is only for on-street parking, and it is not for garages. I misspoke. Our parking manager just clarified the same for us.
Okay, all right. Well, I appreciate the clarification. This just relates to the on-street parking meters, and Mr. Bidae and I discussed it previously, and I'm okay with this one, though.
Okay, so you don't want to take it up with 22, and you'd like to just stick to it now?
No, I'm fine with it now. It seems to be a totally separate issue than, as compared to 22. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right. Do we have any other questions from council members? Hearing none. Who would like to go ahead and move this ordinance?
Mr. Chair, could I just ask a quick question?
Sorry. Yes, sir. Councilman Carlson.
Mr. Bidae, a year ago, we had a lot of comments from the disability community, and in particular, you know, some of our friends who need to park in the disabled spots were concerned that people that did not have proper permits have been parking in their spaces. Does this address that at all, and what's the status of that?
Thank you, Councilman, and that's a good question. So a couple of things on that. One, we have been working with the county to understand what the best operation or the best solution is to address the concerns with... And there are two concerns. One was around council meetings and, you know, access to council meetings. And to address that, we are increasing the number of disabled spaces around OCH for the same, Old City Hall, that is. And the other thing that we're doing is we're also improving our system or the app. And currently, that's in procurement to where, one, it'll be easier to extend the hours as and when needed, should the person seek to stay past the four-hour window. And the other is, we'll also get better information from the back end to understand what the demand for disabled parking spaces is, and we can adjust supply, but also hours of operation accordingly.
Thanks, sir.
All right, any other questions? All right. Councilman Ding Felder, would you like to read this ordinance?
Yes, I'd be glad to. Regarding Item Number 1, filed 2020-8, Chapter 15, I'll be reading ordinance being presented for first reading consideration on ordinance of the city of Tampa, Florida, relating to parking meter regulations, making revisions to City of Tampa Code of Ordinances, Chapter 15, Brand Parking, amending Article 2, Regulations, Permits, Penalties, Division 2, Parking Meter Regulations, Section 15-81, Hours of Operation for Parking Meters, Repealing All Ordinances or Parts of Ordinances in Conflict therewith, Providing for Severability, Providing Effectivity.
Do we have a second?
Thank you. Second.
Second from Councilmember Goode's. Roll call vote, please.
Vera.
Yes.
Goode's.
Yes.
Ding Felder.
Yes.
Maniscalco.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Citro.
Yes.
Miranda. Miranda. All right, motion carried, with Miranda being absent at vote. Second reading and adoption will be held on November 5th, 2020, at 9:30 AM.
Thank you very much. All right. Number 2, we discussed moving that towards the end of the agenda. We go to Public Safety Committee, which is Chair Citro for Items 3 through 9.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I'd like to move Items 3 through 9.
We have a second. Second from Councilmember Goode's. Roll call vote.
Vera.
Yes.
Goode's.
Yes.
Ding Felder.
Yes.
Maniscalco.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Citro.
Yes.
Miranda.
None.
Motion carried unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Next up, we have Parks, Rec, and Cultural Committee, Items 10 to 13, and Chair Goode's.
Do you care if I move Items 10 to 13, sir?
All right, do we have a second? Second from Councilman Miranda. Roll call vote.
Vera.
Yes.
Goode's.
Yes.
Ding Felder.
Yes.
Maniscalco.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Citro.
Yes.
Miranda.
None.
Motion carried unanimously.
Thank you very much. Next up, we have Public Works Committee with Chair Ding Felder. It's Items 14 through 19, with the exception of 15, which was pulled.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll move Items 14 and then 16 through 19, and we'll defer Item 15 for a later discussion.
Sir, 19 has been deferred as well, per the memorandum, Chief Bennett.
Oh, that's correct. I'm sorry. With the exception of 19, because it has that memo, so...
All right, let me restate my motion. I'll move Items 14, 16, 17, and 18.
All right, do we have a second?
Yes. Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Goode's. Yes.
Mr. Chairman, may I just question, what is happening with Number 19?
That was a memo from the Chief of Staff to move it to staff reports.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we have a second, I believe, from Councilman Goode's. Can we get a roll call vote on this?
Yes, Vera.
Yes.
Goode's.
Yes.
Ding Felder.
Yes.
Maniscalco.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Citro.
Yes.
Miranda.
None.
Motion carried unanimously.
Thank you very much. Next up is the Finance Committee. Chair Miranda, if you could move Items 20 and 21. 22 and 23 have been pulled and taken to the back of the agenda.
I can, Chairman, move Item 20 and 21.
Second, Citro.
Second from Councilman Citro. Roll call vote.
Vera.
Yes.
Goode's.
Yes.
Ding Felder.
Yes.
Maniscalco.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Citro.
Yes.
Miranda.
None.
Motion carried unanimously.
All right, next we have Building, Zoning, and Preservation Committee with Chair Carlson. Remember that Item Number 29 is a substitute. You would move those Items 24 through 47, with 29 as a substitute?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair. I'd like to move Items 24 through 47, with 29 as a substitute.
Do we have a second? Second from Councilman Miranda. Roll call vote.
Vera.
Yes.
Goode's.
Yes.
Ding Felder.
Yes.
Maniscalco.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Citro.
Yes.
Miranda.
None.
Motion carried unanimously.
All right, next up is Councilmember Vera with the Transportation Committee, Items 48 through 53.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair. Thank you very much. I hereby move Items 48 through 53.
Second.
All right, we have a second from Councilman Miranda. Roll call vote.
Vera.
Yes.
Goode's.
Yes.
Ding Felder.
Yes.
Maniscalco.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Citro.
Yes.
Miranda.
None.
Motion carried unanimously.
Okay. Next up, we have Item Number 54, which is a request for us to schedule a public hearing for November 12, 2020, at 6:00 PM.
I'll move, Mr. Chairman.
Second motion from Councilman Miranda, second from Councilman Goode's. Roll call vote.
Vera.
Yes.
Goode's.
Yes.
Ding Felder.
Yes.
Maniscalco.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Citro.
Yes.
Miranda.
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously.
All right, we are at actually 9:31, so we can go to our public hearing, which is Item 55. Can I get a motion to open the public hearing?
Oh, Mr. Chairman.
Motion from Councilman Miranda, second from Councilman Goode's. Any objections? Hearing known by unanimous consent, the public hearing is open. As I stated at the beginning of this agenda, there is a request from... Hearing done by unanimous consent. The public hearing is open. As I stated at the beginning of this agenda, there is a request from Attorney Jam McLean to continue this to October 15th. Is Jam McLean on the line?
Yes, good morning, Mr. Chair. This is Jam McLean with the offices of the attorney and council members. We received a last-minute request from the Hotel and Motel Association regarding the downtown Ebor City Tourism Marketing District Non-Adware Assessment that we are here at issue today. They would like to request a two-week continuance to your next meeting, which would be October the 15th. There's been a necessity to revise the role again. In addition to the revisions that I had submitted as part of the substitution of documents, I think it would be best if the council would agree to that continuance. We would revise the resolution and the role and resubmit those documents for your consideration on October the 15th.
All right, can we get a motion? Are there any questions at this time?
Mr. Chairman, is there anyone in the public who wishes to speak to that and that continuance?
Is there anybody in the public that wishes to speak to the continuance and to item 55?
We did not receive any requests for this particular item.
Thank you.
All right, all right, hearing done. We have a motion to to continue this. Is it Councilman Citro? Is that you?
Yes, sir.
All right, we have a motion to continue to October 15th. Do we have a second? All right, we have a second from Councilman Miranda. Is there any objection?
Mr. Chairman.
Roll call vote.
Excuse me, yes, and also if we can, just as part of the motion, please, because it is a public hearing, a public hearing, 9:30 a.m., please.
All right. We have a motion then to continue this for 9:30 a.m., October 15th. We had the motion to close from Citro, second by Councilman Miranda. Roll call vote.
Viera.
Yes.
Goode's.
I'm sorry to interrupt. Please forgive me. It's Martin Shelby. The motion, I believe, is to continue. Is that correct, Madam Clerk?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, go ahead with the roll call, please.
Goode's.
Yes.
Dingfelder.
Yes.
Meniskakow.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Citro.
Yes.
Miranda.
None.
Motion carried unanimously.
All right. Thank you very much. All right, we go to item number 56. We've already opened the public hearings, so who is here to present this for? It's a second reading. Is there any, are there any questions or comments?
This is, good morning, this is Julie Hardy with the City Attorney's Office. And this is the second reading of the ordinance that will allow code enforcement officers that are duly certified to issue parking citations or violations of the parking code. I couldn't answer any questions.
Do we have any questions?
All right. There's no questions, I'll be glad to read the substitute ordinance.
Wait, let's ask if there's anybody since the public hearing. Do you have anybody in the public that's going to speak on this? Is there any public comment on this?
We did not receive any public comment request for this item.
All right, Councilman Dingfelder, before you read the item, can I get a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll move, Mr. Chairman.
Motion to close from Councilman Miranda, second from Councilman Goode's. Any objections? All right, hearing done by unanimous consent. The public hearing is closed. Councilman Dingfelder, go ahead, sir.
All right, regarding item 56, file numbers 2020-8, Chapter 15, and 2020-8, Chapter 19. I'll move substitute ordinance presented for a second reading and adoption as follows. An ordinance of the city of Tampa, Florida relating to the scope of authority of the city's code enforcement director and duties of code enforcement officers, making revisions to City of Tampa Code of Ordinances, Chapter 19, property maintenance and structural standards, amending Article One in general, Division One, General Provisions Administrative Authority, Section 19-4, Department of Code Enforcement, duties and scope of authority of the director by expanding the powers, duties and responsibilities of the code enforcement director and their code enforcement officers to administer and enforce City Code, Chapter 15, for end parking, amending City of Tampa Code of Ordinances, Chapter 15, for end parking, Section 15-3, 15-54, and 15-122, to define duly authorized code enforcement officers and authorized same to enforce Chapter 15 provisions, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith, providing for severability, providing an effective date.
Second.
Second from Councilman Miranda. Roll call vote.
Viera.
Yes.
Goode's.
Yes.
Dingfelder.
Yes.
Meniskakow.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Citro.
Yes.
Miranda.
None.
Motion carried unanimously.
Alrighty, we're just breezing through the agenda, but don't get too excited. We're now at staff reports and unfinished business. There were several items pulled. Before we begin with 57, 58 in that order, we'll go to the items that were pulled, which were, or pulled or requested to be pushed back with her 215, 19, 22, and 23. I believe we should begin in order. Item number two.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, Martin Shelby, I just want to be clear on the procedure because there was a walk-on on the addendum that was a request of the Chief of Staff to add, under staff reports, the first item being something that he'd like to have added permanently, a request of council called the administration update. Did you want that to be generally taken up now, that item, before you go into the substantive items?
All right, we'll go with the Chief of Staff first, and then we'll go with the items that were requested by Councilman Dingfelder. So if the Chief of Staff is on the line, we'll begin with you, and then we'll go in the pulled item order.
Good morning, Chairman. Good morning, Council. Thank you for the amendment to create the opportunity for the administration to give typically a report on non-action items by council. Today, we have three items. Two will be presented by me very quickly, and then I will hand it off to Osea Nguyen, our Administrator over Neighborhoods and Community Affairs, for an announcement. But first, the first item I wanted to share with council is something I know that is here and dear to our heart, which is our personnel, especially going through the state of emergency that we've been in since March with COVID-19. And I know you have a memo from Kelly Austin coming up on an item that is, was asked for a written report as it relates to caring for our personnel, both general employees and public safety, as it relates to the impact of COVID-19. So I thought it would be relevant and pertinent to give you some data about our personnel as we close out the fiscal year and, of course, the calendar month of September, being in this state of emergency for multiple months. As you know, Kelly Austin is our Director over Human Resources and Talent Development, but she is very well supported in the public safety side with Tiffany Klein, who is our occupational health nurse. And I know some of you have had a chance to appreciate her level of service under the fire department out at the police training center. And if it wasn't for Tiffany supporting public safety and even some of those, and Kelly Austin and her team supporting our general employees, we would really be challenged, and I think you'll see this in a second. Tampa Fire Rescue has had, and I'm just going to do some rounding for the sake of data, but they've had over 60 confirmed cases, and it has had an impact of over 830 quarantines to their staff since the beginning of the COVID epidemic or pandemic. TPD has had right around the same number, 60 impacted employees, and over 760 quarantines during the same period of time. Our general employees impact has been over 110, with over 550 impacted. And so that kind of brings the total to about 236 impacted by COVID-19, causing a quarantine of over 2,100 employees. And if you add those together, that's over 50% of our workforce that has been impacted on the front lines of serving the community as it relates to COVID-19. And if, and I know it's been mentioned before, I've shared some of these numbers in a gross percentage with you that just a month or so ago, it was about 45% of our staff had a direct or a quarantine impact related to COVID-19. So I thought it was important to share that data with you. The second thing that I want to share is, as you know, the Board of County Commissioners is doing the emergency Thursday, and during that presentation, they send a slide deck out that talks about the COVID rate per 100,000 for the last seven days. Now, I haven't seen the slide deck that will be presented today, but using the slide deck from a week ago, there are five tiers that they tend to show through the Department of Health. Level red, a level orange, two level yellows, and a level green. And we're sitting between a level orange and a level yellow. At the last report was 86 per 100,000 for a seven-day span on average. Our goal is to get down to seven. So if you hear go from 86 down to seven per 100,000, then that's the ideal goal to get in that green level to move forward. The good news is, is that if the statewide average has been hovering around 10% positivity rate, our community, our Hillsborough County number is just a little bit above 5%, but our goal is to get below 5% and keep continuing down. I say this to council because of your constituency, we need to continue to encourage wearing the mask and supporting the business sector. Have patrons wear masks, especially in our discretionary density environment of attending restaurants, attending other social gatherings, because without those protective measures in place, we may see an unfortunate trend back the other way with schools open and more events open as in the private sector, if you will. And of course, the patronizing of either restaurants or other social activities. So we need to encourage the social distancing, the mask-wearing, work from a leadership model, if anything else, in addition to the scientific aspect. So again, I just wanted to share that data with you. Again, no expected action. I just wanted to make sure that we are keeping you abreast of the risk analysis to our valued personnel and, of course, the community. And with that, I will hand it over to Osea Nguyen, who has a special announcement as it relates to Parks and Recreation Department, and also remind you that she's also wearing a hat currently of Chief Diversity Officer. So with that, Osea, you can take the mic.
All right, good morning. Thank you, Chief. Good morning, Council. Julie, when Paul Dowell left the position as the Director of Parks and Recreation, I was asked by a number of you, what are the plans for filling that position? And I was very open with sharing that, really assessing to see what skill sets were needed for the park and for the director's position before just putting someone in there. I'm pleased to announce to you this morning that Sharisha Hills has been appointed as the interim Director of Parks and Recreation. Sharisha brings to the organization over 15 years of experience in plant operating, in creating and managing not only change within Park and Rec, the division, but also change in the organization. She has had the opportunity of working in each area within the Parks and Recreation field. And we feel that this is a great fit for this position. Sharisha has a bachelor's degree in Recreation Leisure Service Management and a master's degree in Business Administration. As the diversity officer for the city of Tampa, I am tasked with seeing where can we be more diverse? Are we representing not only the public or representing our departments with being diverse and inclusive? That as we go through our hires, this is the first step in us assessing to make sure that we are representing all and that we are living up to the commitment that we made to you to be a diverse and inclusive organization. Just wanted to share that announcement, and I can entertain any questions should you have.
Do we have any questions? Yes, go ahead, Councilman Goode.
I'm elated that we're moving in the right direction on a lot of these initiatives that we have going on in the city at this particular time. Just want to ask a question. I see the term interim director. Are we still looking in-house, outside, or is a certain timeframe we're looking with this term interim director, Ms. Nguyen?
Yes, so we are, we still are looking, but we will be looking. We want to make sure that we do have the right person and the right fit and to be fair to Sharisha, to see if this is a fit for her. So we will continue to look, and at this point, Councilman Goode's, I do not have a timeframe for that.
Thank you. I know we have a lot of good managers that are over in that Parks and Recreation Department. I know all of them personally. I've worked with all of them. So anybody could have been a great candidate to fill this spot, but I think with the needs of the city at a particular time, I think you made a good choice as the interim person at this time. But again, all the manager, good friends of mine, are deserving as well. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Oh, yeah. After Miranda, Mr. Chair. After Miranda.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to say on behalf of Sharisha Hills, speaking for this office, we've had contact with her for many years, and she, like others in that department, has been always very acceptable to working out whatever we requested to make sure that the department runs at 100% efficiency. And I think that that first letter interim soon would be permanent. And just my feeling, she's been outstanding person personality-wise and able to do the work that is requested by Parks Department is one of the hardest ones there is in the city because you have so many variables and so many other things you have to do. And I just express you my feelings that if I judge this person what she is, I don't think you're going to have a problem with the word interim in front of it. Thank you very much.
Anybody else? Councilman Viera.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. No, I wanted to echo what's been said, including about Ms. Hills. And I've met her before. I remember meeting her over at Copeland Park and just being really impressed by her. If memory serves me well, she's a Tampa native, went to Academy of the Holy Names, Notre Dame University, as I recall. Just a very accomplished woman, and, you know, we want to see people working for the city of Tampa in these department heads, if we can, who are from Tampa, who grew up here, who know the Tampa experience. That's something that's so important. Now, mind you, we've got a lot of folks who are not from Tampa, and that's great, and they do a great job. But that's an extra benefit, I think, that Ms. Hills has, which is she knows Tampa. She's from here. And then she would go to Notre Dame University, if my memory serves me right, and do great things there. She knows the Tampa experience, and she's been able to do great things. So, you know, I think she's a great pick. I agree with said that I think we're going to pretty soon see that interim taken off and make it permanent. If that's something that should be amended, but again, I just wanted to applaud the administration. That's a great pick, and I'm sure it's one that all of council's going to support, and at least for interim. And I'm sure she'll do a great job from there. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. Anybody else?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Dingfelder.
Thank you. I wanted to echo the sentiments of Councilman Viera and congratulate Ms. Hills and Ms. Nguyen for this excellent choice, as well as the mayor. Haven't had a chance to work with Ms. Hills a whole lot. I think she was coming on board as I was leaving council the last time, but I've heard great things about her, and I'm sure she's going to do a good job. And in regard to what Councilman Viera said, I think it's really, really important, and I'm really proud of the administration for making this choice internally. I think it's a really important message that we would send to our employees, that if you're a good, if you're a great employee, you have an opportunity to move up through our system. And when the openings open up, you'll be the first ones we look at because you know our city. You understand our city. Understand how things work, and you understand the people in the city and the people in the community. And I think it's a great message because otherwise, when people see a dead end at the, you know, above them, a glass ceiling that they can't bust through, you know, they get discouraged, and maybe they'd want to move on to, you know, to another city and not stay with us. So not only do I think it's a great day for Ms. Hills and for the city. So not only do I think it's a great day for Ms. Hills and for the city, I think it's a great day for all the city employees in that regard. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Anybody else?
All right. These updates from the chief of staff and whatnot, in order to make them permanent, we need a motion to keep it on the agenda moving forward. Is that correct, Mr. Shelby?
Yes, and we could ask Mr. Bennett to address it more specifically, if he has anything he wants to add. I believe it would be titled Administration Update to be placed as the first item on the staff reports on every regular agenda. I don't know whether he wants to add anything to that subject matter. I don't believe it's going to be the way he had described it, as something that is necessary to have a report every agenda. I believe it's on an as-needed basis. Mr. Bennett, maybe you want to address that with the council?
Thank you, Mr. Shelby. You are correct. We are just asking for the first item on staff reports to be a placeholder for administrative updates, so we can bring council and the public some timely information or data that doesn't require action, but to share information like we did today, keep it brief, but again, relevant. And if there's nothing to report, we would simply say there's nothing to report.
So, Mr. Chairman, if we could have a motion to that effect to direct the clerk to make sure that appears on every agenda at the regular meeting, the first item on the staff reports?
The chairman, I'm with a motion.
All right. We have a motion, second from Councilman Miranda. Any objections? Hearing none by unanimous consent, the motion passes. All right. Chief of Staff Bennett, since you're still on the line, I saw the memo that you had asked for number nineteen to be placed under staff reports. Would you like to discuss that at this time?
I would defer to Ms. Carol Post, Administrator for Development and Economic Opportunity. I believe they have a presentation ready.
All right. Go ahead, Ms. Post.
Good morning. Good morning, Chair and Council. Appreciate it. Carol Post, Administrator for Development and Economic Opportunity. I'm joined for this brief presentation by our Director of the Tampa Convention Center in Agarvee. Just to give some context for consideration in front of today is an agreement that would provide funding for the first step of a long-term plan for capital improvements and expansion at our convention center. Our city is growing, our hotel capacity is growing, and our team is committed to continue to attract the world-class events that we've seen coming to the city. As such, we believe it's incumbent to ensure that our convention facilities evolve as well. Notwithstanding COVID and the unusual times of the last several months, we actually have a very optimistic slate of events on the horizon in front of us and bookings that are picking up for 2021, and we are confident that that will continue. The convention center and its team were recently certified by the Global Bio Risk Advisory Council, which pertains to establishing effective virus protection methods throughout the facility. They did an excellent job to achieve that very rapidly for a well-recognized certification. And the TCC Ready Plan, which I shared with the council earlier in the summer, has really enabled the operation to continue successfully through this unusual time and position the convention center for its future. So relative to today's agreement for consideration, we have invited, as some of you have already participated in, a more detailed briefing of the long-term plan, as well as a tour of the facility, to see exactly where some of these changes and expansions would occur. We will keep that door open for council members who are interested to come see that onsite. But to give you a collective briefing this morning, I'd like to turn over to our Director, Una Garvee. She deserves all of the credit for the steady hand that she's demonstrated throughout the COVID situation and will be anchoring us for this project that lies ahead. So I will turn it over to Una for a presentation on the capital improvement plan. Thank you.
Good morning, Honorable Counsel. Una Garvee, Convention Center and Tourism Director for the City of Tampa. Thank you for the opportunity to present an overview of item nineteen, a resolution approving the initial agreement with Skanska USA Builders and the amount of $2.1 million for a design bill contract at TCC. Next slide, please. As you may be aware, we have been making several upgrades to our venue with the addition of local eateries for our visitors and are taking advantage of some downtime due to COVID and making cosmetic improvements throughout our facility. Next slide, please. So where are we headed next and why? Next slide, please. TCC is a thirty-year-old facility with chillers that are used in Freon, no longer produced, and elevators that need to be changed from hydraulic to electronic. Some of our largest and most valuable shows have indicated they are outgrowing us. We have soon to open a four- and five-star hotel properties with guests that travel between both destinations, so offering the same level of product services is critical to the success of the region. We also need to make sure that we are offering product offerings and technology components that keep us competitive within the industry. Next slide, please. We work closely with Visit Tampa Bay and our hotel partners. While this spreadsheet at a glance may be confusing to understand, overall, it indicates what Carol had touched upon, and it is that the hotel room nights, on average, from twenty-one all the way through to twenty-seven and some beyond that, are actually at a pace report of a hundred and twenty percent occupancy. So growing the destination overall is a critical component of staying on top of having enough breakout rooms and meeting rooms and trade show floor space that maximizes the potential to continue to build downtown hotel blocks and potentially out into the West Shore area and up into the east portions of the city. Next slide, please. The initial agreement that you're approving today is part of a three-phase program. Each will be presented to council at the commencement of each phase. Today's initial agreement is Phase One, and it actually is for the design and engineering architectural services associated with the build-out. Phase Two, of course, will be the conversion of those designs into a construction plan with a guaranteed master plan budget. We will use target value design to identify the priorities, some of which will come before you shortly as early output items. And then Phase Three, approximately the year 2022, 2023, will actually update the 2016 TCC Master Plan for even possible future expansion that keeps us competitive with other convention centers that we are competitive with in the industry that are building convention trade show floors that are in the three hundred and fifty to four hundred thousand square foot range, and I'm not talking about the ones across the I-4 corridor in Orlando. We had nine respondents to the RFI, and five companies participated in the CCNA interview process. Funding will be derived from CRA funds and tourist development tax dollars, of which Rob Rosner, Director of Economic Opportunity, is available to answer any questions associated with those fundings. Next slide, please. Skanska Design Team includes approximately eighty-one percent of the Wemby participation. Next slide, please. Skanska's design team includes eighty-one percent of the Wemby participation. Skanska had the highest Wemby participation amongst all of the proposers. Additionally, Skanska has worked closely with the City of Tampa EBO Office and held a WebEx event in unison with results, a hundred and thirty participating businesses participating in that event. Next slide, please. This design criteria, now back one slide, please. It should be on the Future Vision 2023 slide. It's one. Okay, so we're missing a slot. We're missing a slide. Just stop at the conceptual picture for me. Right there. Thank you so much. This design criteria packages has many different components that are being addressed, some of which I've identified as part of the infrastructure improvements that are needed. The overall concept is to upgrade the infrastructure, modernize the current product offerings, and add additional meeting spaces. I want to make sure that it's clear that while we're doing all of this, we are continuing to host events. This photo is conceptual in nature. In addition to gaining eighteen new flexible meeting spaces or approximately eighteen thousand more square feet interior-wise, we will also gain nine thousand square feet of additional outdoor rental space under our canopy, all while improving the Riverwalk experience. Next slide, please. The next few design slides are all conceptual, and they are part of, what you're looking at on here are the meeting rooms that'll come off of the convention level as we break through the west hall, over the canopy, taking the meeting space all the way out to the pillars of the Riverwalk. Next slide, please. This slide is actually the spaces that are on the fourth floor, where the rest of, there are several meeting rooms up there, there are approximately twelve meeting rooms up on the fourth floor. This will build upon that inventory for additional breakout space. Next slide, please. We will bring back, we will bring back to you the final design during the Phase Two process. So we won't spend too much time on these particular slides, but these are some of the conceptual thoughts that we have in regards to how the space could look with windows that overlook the trade show floor from the fourth floor. Next slide, please. And of course, columns and that'll actually add a flexibility to the space that will make it a more, a space that could be either used for meeting rooms or could be used in as an extension to the trade show floor, a very valuable piece of marketing for our convention center. Next slide, please. And this kind of gives you a bird's eye view of what we would look at from new meeting rooms from above the convention center floor, looking down upon the trade show floor. Next. Over the past thirty years, over thirty years ago, a similar council bravely voted for the development of this majestic venue that grew this city into a spectacular showcase for the world to see. Today, gentlemen, you have that same opportunity to build upon that legacy and to take this valuable asset before you and to continue to grow our city and our destination for decades to come. That will conclude my presentation for this morning, and I hope if you have any questions, Carol, Rob, and I are available to help answer them.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions from council members?
Mr. Chair.
Councilman Peter. Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. Ms. Garvee, thank you very much. The convention center and your staff just received a very, very nice award. Could you tell the people that are listening about that award?
Actually, it, Carol touched upon it a little bit, is actually the Gold Star accreditation from the Global Biodiversity Risk Council, and it is an award that says that we are a sanitized, clean facility and that we will continue to hold that a standard that is set by that council that is held throughout this nation. And one of the things is that the Tampa Convention Center was the first in the region to receive that designation. It is one of fifteen in the state of Florida to have reached that designation, and it is probably one of forty-seven throughout the nation in convention centers alone. In those fifteen that I mentioned, for the state of Florida, a lot of them are actually smaller venues like hotels, even some of the smaller entertainment complexes that are spread out throughout the state. I believe we are the largest in the state of Florida, aside from the Orange County Convention Center, who also has the designation. It is an opportunity for us to market the convention center as, in a completely different way. So we're really excited and very, very proud of the amount of hard work that went in and the collaboration it took from so many people from not only our own City of Tampa team, but also from our partners' teams that are on our property.
Well, congratulations to you and your staff. Mr. Chair, these are improvements that are needed at the convention center. They're also going to be adding amenities to every event planner is wanting to see and keeping the convention center modern, and these improvements will also help the Tampa Convention Center stay very, very competitive with the surrounding areas. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. Who?
Miranda, can I speak?
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
I just want to thank Una Garvee for having the foresight in the City of Tampa, for having the foresight that you realize when you have a service building like this is that it's got to be updated every so often, and the past administration, I believe it was under Mayor Martinez, that this started the convention center and then picked up later on by many, many other mayors, but special thanks to Mayor Greco's office, who, we had a convention center for a long period of time that never had any convention hotels around it, and it was Mayor Greco's foresight that we landed the Marriott Waterside, and look around you now, there's so much development there, and for, again, Mayor Greco for expanding, spending, I forgot, eight million or whatever it was, to bring the convention center more to realistic standards about twenty years ago. Now, Una Garvee is bringing this, and I want to thank her, thank the administration that we have, and thank the employees who work there. However, there's one item that we have not met our goal, in my opinion. Many years ago, we had thirty-two docks right across the street, water-wise anyway, on the Bay Shore Boulevard where people had boats, and I don't know what happened. I was not, I left office during that period of time to do that and do Marjory Park. Marjory Park docks were installed, but the one in Bay Shore were never done. And at that time, we had two hundred and fifty to three hundred waiting lists for people who wanted to put their boats and pay a fee to have their boats there. So what I'm saying is, I don't like to go in debt, but I can tell you one thing, docks pay for themselves. When you have a waiting list and you have the waterfront that we're creating now and a piece by piece, I make it another venue for people to come and enjoy Tampa, I think is necessary. Later on, I'll be asking for a motion for this administration to review that. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? All right.
Yes, sir. Yeah, well, well. Dingfalter. Dingfalter.
Go ahead.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Miranda, excellent point. I was on council when staff came and said the Bay Shore docks, those Bay Shore docks are falling apart. I asked the same question. I said, why don't we rebuild them? At the time, the administration said, oh, we don't have the money to do it. But I agree with you completely, Mr. Miranda, and I look forward to supporting your motion on that. It's not necessarily directly a convention center issue, but it's definitely a city issue that we need to explore. Ms. Garvee, thank you for your presentation, Carol, et cetera. Looks like some great improvements to the convention center. My question is this, and Ms. Garvee, can you go back to the very first slide that shows the convention center from a distance? There we go. Several years ago, I brought up this issue. I don't know what happened to it. I don't know what happened to it. Ms. Garvey, how much... What's your electric bill every month, approximately, give or take, when you guys are busy?
Approximately fifty thousand dollars.
Fifty thousand dollars a month, six hundred thousand dollars a year. And look at that roof, okay? Ms. Garvey, have we, in recent years, done a study on putting solar on that roof? Because I know the question has come up repeatedly from city council. Is the... I mean, I know it's an expensive proposition, but I think these days with solar improvements in terms of technologically and economically, we've got a tremendous opportunity on that roof for solar power. We are the Sunshine State. And I think it would help you with your electric bill. Have we looked at that in recent years, Ms. Garvey?
Actually, we've... Councilman Dingfelder, we've actually looked at it in recent months. With the appointment of Whit Raymer as the Sustainability Officer for the city, we have definitely been paying close attention to all of those sustainability opportunities that will be presented. We're also going after a LEED certification that's currently in the works to help us with some of the HVAC components that will drive down that bill also. We're always looking for efficiency and effectiveness in our organization. So yeah, it's right at the top of our line items of conversation.
All right. Mr. Chairman, at the end of the meeting, I'm going to make a motion to ask for a staff report from Whit as well as from the convention center specifically on that issue. I think every day that goes by is a missed opportunity. Ms. Garvey, you know I'm not criticizing you in that regard. There's lots of other factors. I think you've done a great job for... And we're lucky to have you for all the years you've been here. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? Anybody else? Anybody else? All right. Can we get a motion to move item number nineteen?
Oh, move, Mr. Chairman.
Second, Citro.
Councilman Miranda with the second from Councilman Citro. Roll call, vote.
Vera.
Yes.
Goos.
Yes.
Dingfelder.
Yes.
Manis Tako.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Citro.
Yes.
Miranda.
Yes.
Motion carry unanimously.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you very much. Okay. The items that were pulled for discussion that we moved to the back here by Councilmember Dingfelder, we'll start in order and we'll go with item number two.
Good morning, Chair. Good morning, Council. Vic Bide, Director, Mobility Department. Item two relates to first reading for consideration for extension of the no-fee zone in two different... For a no-fee zone for the multimodal transportation impact fees in two different districts. One is Ebor City Impact Fee District and the other is the East Tampa Impact Fee District. Maps for both of these were included in the agenda packet. However, I'm not sure if we can bring those up as well, Suling. I emailed those earlier. There you go. Perfect. And so that's the Ebor City Impact Fee District, and we also have the East Tampa. We're recommending the extension of the no-fee zone because both of these areas still have parts that experience blight. And what we'd like to do is attract development in these areas. We've also coordinated with the CRAs, and the CRAs are willing to work with us and provide any necessary improvements in partnership as well. In the Ebor District, of particular concern or focus are the areas south of Fourth Avenue and east of Twenty Second Street generally. These areas are still not developed to the extent that they can be, and they still have potential. So this becomes an incentive, and the same applies to the East Tampa area as well. So at this point, I'm happy to take any questions, clarifications.
Do we have any questions?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay. Let's start with the East Tampa. And can you pull... Can you tighten in on the map for East Tampa? I don't know who's controlling that screen. I don't know if you, Vic, or Suling.
There it is.
Okay. Let me make it abundantly clear. I'm totally supportive of this ordinance change to extend incentives for East Tampa, which what I think of traditionally is East Tampa, which is everything above I-4 and everything to the east of 275. But before I get into my questions, Vic, can you back up a little bit and explain? It looks like the multimodal fee came in. It's a multimodal impact fee. I'm a little confused. Can you explain to council what the overall purpose is of the multimodal impact fee? Why do we... Why was it adopted? It looks like 2015 originally. You know, why was it adopted? Why is it there?
Sure. Thank you, Councilmen. So a few years ago, we moved from the impact fee to a multimodal impact fee, particularly to focus on the fact that, you know, any development-related impacts that need to be mitigated by developers should focus beyond just roadway, but different roadway user types within the facility. And so by making it a multimodal impact fee, we were able to include pedestrian improvements, lighting improvements and such. This was, again, done a few years back. Typically, these impact fees or the exemptions are allowable for a maximum of five years, subject to approval by council, which is what we're asking for, both in the Ebor and East Tampa areas after coordinating with the CRAs and other stakeholders. The purpose of the impact fee in general is to mitigate impacts of newer development. So be it in terms of capacity, be it in terms of footprint, if it's going to increase the number of trips to that facility and if the current transportation system cannot support those trips, then these impact fees are collected.
Okay.
So I hope that's...
So what I wanted to focus on, on the East Tampa, and let me restate what I said a minute ago. I'm totally in favor of ninety percent of the map that you have up here because East Tampa needs incentives for new development. And this is a good incentive because we would be waiving the fees. But the portion, the little tail down there, down in the lower corner, it includes that Nucio, one of those apartments that they're getting ready to tear down off of Nucio. It looks like it includes what used to be Central Park, which is now Encore. And there's now some... You know, there's been a lot of public development in Encore, but now there's private development in Encore. So the central east, I believe this is the central east multimodal zone. When I look at Chapter 25-71, you know, I really don't see the point of excluding that little tail. In other words, the developers who are looking to redevelop, you know, in that little tail area, they don't need incentives. What they need to do is be paying their fair share. If they don't pay into the multimodal fee, if you have a project that needs multimodal money, the general taxpayer from that same district has to pick up the ball and pay for those improvements, either local or federal money. You know, why shouldn't the developer in that little tail area, why shouldn't those developers pay their fair share of multimodal? Hello?
So, yeah, Councilman, we look at the entire impact fee zone and if there are areas of opportunity and improvement and, you know, as you pointed out, north of the interstate or I-4, rather, there are many areas where we do want to incentivize. Since this is all part of one zone, we're considering the needs of the entire zone, and we're recommending that the impact fees be... The no-impact fee be extended for five years.
Okay. Well, I understand that, but it doesn't have to be that way. We could redraft... And legal can help me out on this. But with a stroke, a quick stroke of the pen, we can redraft this, you know, this district. It doesn't have to be all or none. Because what I'm seeing here, it's very unfortunate that the city and that district, that specific multimodal district, would be losing out on potentially millions of dollars of multimodal fees to help us make improvements. Vic, I know I don't need to tell you what's going on because you tell us what's going on. But right through that little tail down there by Nucio, you've got two major projects coming through there. You've got the green... Your green, what do you call it? The green artery or the green spine?
Green spine, yep.
You've got the green spine coming right up Nucio, and that requires a lot of money. And then even more so, you've got the reengineering of all the tracks for the trolley. And that's... I looked online last night. That's like twenty-five million dollars of local public money that we don't have right now. I mean, if all for transportation was a done deal, maybe we'd have it. But we know that's not a done deal. So those projects that are potentially in that little tail area could help fund both of those major projects. So at the end of these questions, I'm going to move that we redraw this map and leave East Tampa as an exception and as an exclusionary zone to take off that little tail that's south of I-4. Now, Vic, could you go to the other map, the Ebor map?
Councilman Dingfelder, while... Okay, go ahead. Councilman Dingfelder, this is Morris Massey, Deputy City Attorney. I did want to clarify a couple of things, and we can talk about Ebor next. But the area that you're talking about, just to clarify, those are included with established CRAs as well. They're not the East Tampa CRA. I think it's the Central Park CRA and perhaps another one. But they are within redevelopment areas that have, we've recognized, suffer from slum and blight condition. And the purpose of this exemption is to attract the type of development we hope to see coming in these areas. So I just wanted to put that on the record.
Okay, Mr. Massey, I'm glad you're chiming in. Council, the city has the ability to redraw that map. It doesn't have to be all or none. Is that correct?
Ultimately, it's your... I mean, the exemption areas have to be approved by council ordinance. So it is... Ultimately, this is a legislative act that requires those exemptions to occur. We had brought these forward based on kind of the boundaries of the redevelopment areas because they met the slum and blight definition. The other factor that we're required to look at is whether the existing transportation facilities or roadways and those things that serve those areas have sufficient capacity or within the transportation contingency exemption area. And all these areas meet that criteria in the code. So that's why we're bringing these forward to you.
And Mr. Dingfelder, this is Andrea Zelman, Deputy City Attorney. If I may jump in, just as a kind of a philosophical thing, I want to remind you, we create incentives like exemption areas to incentivize developers to jump in. It would be a significant problem if once we then incentivized a developer to come in and redevelop an area, we turned around and said, "Oh, well, now that we have a developer that's interested in this property, let's turn around and take some of the incentives that actually attracted them to that area." So we want to be careful about that.
Okay. All right. Those are all wonderful thoughts, but those are policy decisions. They're not legal decisions. Here's the thing, okay? The second prong that Mr. Massey just discussed is that those... Let me get to it. Okay. I'm at Chapter 25-74, Pren 6. Okay. The first thing you have to do is you have to say that the area suffers from chronically unacceptable levels of poverty, unemployment, physical deterioration, or economic disinvestments. And you also have to prove the second prong. And the second prong is that no multimodal transportation impact fee zone, that it contains sufficient excess transportation infrastructure capacity to accommodate the new development. Okay? I just identified two major, major projects, especially the retrofitting of the trolley line, that we are not... We do not have sufficient capacity. We do not have sufficient funds. And that runs right through that little tail area. So that's my point on that. And Ms. Zelman, in regard to, you know, sort of a bait-and-switch argument that you made, the bottom line on that one is that this is a five-year program. The five years have elapsed. Every five years, you have to look at it again. You can't just say, "Oh, we're going to re-up this every five years automatically." You have to re-up and see what the conditions were. Yes, trust me. I taught at Booker G. Washington Middle School many years ago. That was a severely slummed, blighted area that needed a shot in the arm. But at this point in time, developers are clamoring to come into that area, to build a baseball stadium, to, you know, to redevelop, who knows, perhaps a transportation network that would take people on a high-speed rail all across the state. You know, those are the things that are going to go in that Nucio corridor. But, you know, we don't need to incentivize those things because they're already incentivized. They're incentivized because we've done such a great job of developing downtown and channel side that everybody, all the developers want to build around it. But anyway, so that's as related solely to that little tail on the East Tampa. Now, look at the... If everybody could look at the map that's in front of us. If you could go up just a little more. And I've had several conversations with Mr. Bide. Mr. Bide has been very consistent with me. He said, "We need to do Ebor City because south of Fourth Avenue, we need redevelopment. And east of Twenty Second Street, we need redevelopment." I would agree with you completely, Mr. Bide, on that. Okay? Those are still the depressed areas of Ebor City. Okay? Those are the areas that need incentive incentives, south of Fourth Avenue and east of Twenty Second Street. But that leaves almost half of Ebor City that is thriving. I mean, I would love to own, you know, a single lot in Ebor City, nonetheless, a city block in Ebor City that's worth millions and millions of dollars, that does not need incentivization. What it needs is multimodal money coming off these developments. So again, my motion at the end of this discussion is specifically going to be to carve out, let's be a little tighter on these maps, okay? We can incentivize without doing a blanket approach. And I've talked enough. Mr. Bide, if you have anything you want to respond to, I think you've been pretty consistent with me and very honest with me, as always, to tell me that in Ebor City, south of Fourth Avenue and east of Twenty Second Street are the areas that need incentives. I don't think you can provide me any information or evidence whatsoever about the remaining quadrant north of Fourth Avenue or to the west of Twenty Second. And I'll give you the floor on that.
So, Councilman, we look at the entirety of the zone as drawn and as approved by previous councils, by ordinance. And we look at opportunities, whether there are still opportunities in there for redevelopment, if there are still areas of blight, and examine that when we make the recommendation. And as I said, this was... And as I said, this was coordinated with our CRAs and, and, and they agree, uh, uh, with what we're seeing as well. Uh, and, and that's the recommendation that we have.
Okay, all right, well, what's the area, what's, what part of north, north of Fourth Avenue and east of Tw- or west of Twenty-Second Street, what part of that is blighted? Because I sure as heck want a piece of that.
So, my point is that because within the Ebor area, there are significant areas south of Fourth Avenue and east of Twenty-Second that do have blight, this zone then becomes, uh, uh, in, in our mind, eligible for that no-fee extension and create incentive. Uh, we don't, we don't necessarily break that zone up, the zone is drawn up as it is.
All right, so the hotel that was just built on Seventh Avenue, what's it called, the Hotel Ha- Hotel Hyatt? Um, how, how much money did we lose by having the, um, multimodal exception there?
I, I don't have the exact numbers on that, uh, we can certainly, uh, research that and present.
Can you ball, can you ballpark it, was it a, a couple hundred thousand dollars?
Uh, it's probably lesser than that, given that there's a grid network present already. Uh, but, but I, I think that's as much of an estimate as I can provide right now.
All right, well, that's just. Councilman Dingfelder, just a couple points, real quick, Morris Massey, I don't, uh, real, real quick. We look at, at, in evaluating whether we recommend bringing forward these exemption zones to you, we look at them in their entirety, we don't focus parcel by parcel. So, you know, so we look at, part of the, part of the calculus is, these are all CRA areas, so they are defined as suffering from slum and blight conditions. And they, and we do look at it, the current conditions, and, and they still are, in our opinion, meet the conditions of your ordinance. Um, and then the other item, I just want to make clear, i- i- is that when we look at the capacity, go ahead, sorry.
I, I understand what you're saying, I'm not talking about block by block. The area I just described, north of Fourth and west, and west of Twenty-Second, is more than a hundred blocks of active, vibrant economic area where redevelopment is already happening. It doesn't need additional incentives. What we need is, we need funds, we need funds for, for multimodal in this, in this district. You know, what, what is the district we're talking about? Is it, isn't it the central east, the central east district, Vic?
This is the Ebor district that we're looking at right now.
But it's not called Ebor, I'm looking at the code, and the code speaks to the central, the central east district.
Yes, that's.
Okay, so Ebor City, money, money that's generated in Ebor City can help not only build, uh, multimodal stuff in Ebor City, but it actually can help in East Tampa, because that's also the central east zone, correct?
Yes, correct.
All right, all right, I'll, I'll open it up, uh, and, and I'll shut up for, for council to chime in.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair, I have something too.
Jim, real quick, Congressman Carlson, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I, I'm just gonna put it out to the council. I've got, since, uh, listening to Mr. Vila, he called me last night about some questions I was gonna ask. But I think maybe, uh, if we could have this continued and staff can, councilmen who may have some other question, uh, and they can explain more about the multimodal, explain more about the impact fee cost and what does it cost for property and so forth and so on, to give a little more general idea of what's really going on in this ordinance, uh, if council is willing to do that. I think a continuous might be, might be granted here, Mr. Dingfelder has a lot of questions, probably gonna make some notions, I think possibly if the council would maybe continue so we can move the agenda, uh, because I do have about two or four questions, but I don't want to belabor the time.
Chairman, Miranda.
All right, Councilman Miranda, go ahead.
I, I was, I agree with Mr. Gude, I was thinking about the same thing, and, uh, that was one item. I was thinking about the other item, anybody who wants to build a baseball, baseball stadium, you're welcome to do it, just bring your own money.
Real quick, uh, City Councilman Morris Massey, I want to let you all know that these exemptions expire October first, so that's one of the reasons we're asking you all to move on them at this point in time. The other thing, real quickly, uh, that, that, so if you, if we continue it, then the, these exemptions will expire. Uh, so that's, uh, uh, they expire October twentieth, so that's, uh.
Mr. Chair.
Anyway.
Councilman Carlson.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I, I just wanted to say, and this is no reflection on Mr. Bday, it's a, it's a larger discussion uh, with multiple departments in the city, but I think that I, I, I'm completely against this. It doesn't, the, the test, I think, is, does this help the people of those areas? Does it help the people of East Tampa? Does it help the people of Ebor City? And the answer is no. Um, in East Tampa in particular, people are worried about gentrification. In Ebor, in my office, my other office in Ebor, Ebor's developing very well right now. And the parts that you're talking about, they're gonna develop in the next few years. It's like Channel Side ten years ago, everybody's waiting to see who's gonna go first, but all that's gonna develop. Um, what the people in those districts need is mobility options, uh, but more importantly, they need, um, opportunities for entrepreneurship. There's, I've taken tours of the empty spaces in Ebor City, all of that is ready to develop. What's missing is not a developer, what's missing is tenants. What's missing in Ebor City is tenants, and why do we not have tenants? Because we need to, we need to encourage business development, which will create jobs in that community. And I think, um, what this is reflective of is an old-school way, an old-school way of looking at economic development. And the old-school way is, is real estate-focused, where real estate is the goal for economic development. And again, we can't use that as the goal, we want to welcome real estate development, and we want to help real estate developers, it's not anything against them. But why should we give, uh, incentives in one area and not the other? It's not fair to developers throughout the city. The thing that we heard loud and clear from the building community was that, was that, um, it, some policies like this seem arbitrary, and where they help some people and don't help others. What we really need is to, is to, is to promote, um, entrepreneurship. We need, and we need to think about East Tampa in particular as a, as a, as a, um, valuable place in our community. Uh, we need to stop thinking about it as the place with cheap land where we can incentivize developers to go and develop it. The people in East Tampa don't want to be gentrified out. They don't want us to come in and spend millions of dollars to gentrify them out. They want us to help them with amenities to improve quality of life. They want us to help them with services that will help them build and grow businesses. And the same thing in Ebor City, um, this is not something we need at all. I think it will work against our objectives, which are to try to help the people of those areas, thank you.
Thank you very much, anybody else? Anybody else? So, uh, Morris Massey did, uh, state, uh, that there was a, uh, a time constraint on this, but Councilman Dingfelder, you had a motion, uh, or wanted to make a motion, I don't know where the discussion was going.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, and, and Sue Ling, if you could put that map back up, because I, I want to speak to those two maps with my motion. Um, Mr. Carlson, I appreciate your, your comments, and I'm not thrilled about the overall plan, but I do believe that, um, uh, that East Tampa, um, could use, and, you know, could use all the incentives available, um, in our bag of tricks, whether or not it's, this, this, this program's not specific to single-family residential, or it's, it really speaks to all construction. And, um, so I think we need, in East Tampa, we need to encourage and incentivize, uh, new construction and, and new development, and however we can, um, uh, but you might differ with that, and that, that's fine, and I understand. But since the Ebor map is up right now, my motion is to, is, is to approve the item, but ask staff to, to come back with a revised map. And, and that map, um, would, would include all of Ebor City as they've shown it, except for the area north of Fourth Avenue and east of Twenty-Second Street. And again, I say that based upon text messages and the comments of, of Mr. Bday, which, which is that he has stressed to me that the areas south of Fourth and the area east of Twenty-Second are the areas that need incentives. Well, if the other areas that I've carved out, north of Fourth and west of Twenty-Second, don't need the incentives, then we shouldn't give it to them. It's free money, it's free money, it's not warranted, and frankly, it hurts the entire, uh, city. It hurts the residents of the city, and it, specifically, it hurts the residents of, of the rest of East Tampa and Ebor City, because we're giving the developers this great incentive that amounts to millions of dollars a year. Um, and, and where does that, so, so if we do that, where does the money for multimodal come from? It, then it's gonna come from the general taxpayers, um, and that's not right, and that's not right. So, my motion, I'm gonna do it in two separate motions, but my motion on this one for Ebor City is to, to, uh, eliminate the multimodal exclusion zone north of Fourth and west of Twenty-Second.
Okay, we have motion, Councilman Dingfelder, do we have a second?
I, I'm still, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I, I know we are, are of a time restraint, but I believe that, again, I think this should be continued. Uh, we have time, I think these have to, to the twentieth, the twenty, twenty-ninth, reports has to, uh, be done. I think some council members still have some questions, and maybe some things could be brought back and implemented be, be, uh, before we actually vote on this item. I would love to support the motion, but I, I just believe that this needs to be continued for, for a pretty good question from other council members.
Uh, Chairman, if I may, Vera.
Go ahead.
Um, I, I, I would agree, and, and, and I may very well, again, vote for Councilman Dingfelder's motion. Um, but I, I, two things, number one, I do think we need more time to look at this specific issue with some of the issues that have been brought up. Number two, I do give special deference to Councilman Gude, I mean, we're, and, and mind you, uh, Councilman Dingfelder is citywide, and we all represent all the constituents within the city of Tampa, um, and, including, uh, Councilman Dingfelder who's citywide, but when, uh, um, in my book, when a, a request is made on something like this, uh, from the district council member, that, I do give that some modest deference, uh, just as an additional persuasive point, I guess, if you will. But the larger point being that I, I, I think we need another week or so if, um, if that is able to be done. But I may very well.
And gentlemen, and gentlemen, I support, I support you completely, and I would have been fine with the continuance. It's just that Mr. Massey jumped in and said, you know, that we're, you know, we've got this other ordinance that's lapsing, and, you know, yada, 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 and we're running out of time, but we didn't put ourselves in that corner, uh, in terms of time. Uh, this is, this popped up on our agenda, and basically, you know, it's kind of like, hey, you guys need to approve this, and you need to improve, approve every part of it, just like they did five years ago. But if we, but if we ask questions, all of a sudden, we get pushed back, and we get shoved into a time corner. But I'm fine with a continuance, uh, frankly, it really doesn't matter if the ordinance lapses, um, for a couple of weeks. Um, that just says that the developer can't come in and, you know, and ask for any money during those few weeks that, you know, that it la- that it lapsed. Um, but other than that, I'm, I'm fine, I'm fine with the continuance. But I can assure you that you will now get, you know, tons of phone calls from, you know, the, the folks in, in those, uh, in those areas of Ebor City, um, you know, who, who feel like they, they deserve, uh, those incentive packages. So, expect those phone calls to be coming, gentlemen.
All right.
Mr. Chair, if I may.
Councilman D. True, yes, sir.
Thank, thank you very much. Uh, as a reform, a recovering YCDC member, Ebor City Development Corporation, I can point out parts of Ebor City that are north of Seventh Avenue, on the west end, that still, in my opinion, need this. I can also point out, uh, places, uh, east of Twenty-Second, north of Seventh, between Twenty-Second and Twenty-Sixth that need this. However, I am, I am under the support of Councilman Gude, even though this is time-sensitive, that have, uh, so I can talk further with Mr. Vic Bday about this. So, I would support postponing a, a couple of weeks.
Mr. Chair.
Councilman Carlson.
I, I would support postponing it too, I, I would prefer that we just kill it. Um, uh, I think what I would encourage everybody to do is, please think about a different model for economic development. We need to be, it, it, the, the, the plans of the past where we, where Florida, uh, government sold themselves short by lowering taxes and incentivizing developers doesn't work. What works is, uh, trying to find the tenants for those, for those buildings. The problem isn't a shortage of buildings in, in any of these places. The problem is a shortage of tenants of the companies to build up. And we don't get them by incentivizing them and paying millions of dollars for somebody to move from New York. We grow the big businesses locally, that's what we really need to be focused on. We need to be focused on how we help the people of our community, and we need to get out of the mindset that real estate development is, is our measure for success, or it's a measure for economic growth, it isn't. And I'm sure some developers in these areas would like this, but there are developers throughout the rest of the city that would love to have that too, and, and we need to be fair to everybody and not, uh, play favorites, thank you.
Thank you, uh, anybody else?
Morris Massey, real quickly, I just want to make sure before council votes that you're aware that, you know, if we delay, that there will be a lapse in the zone. Uh, I just want to make sure that's clear on the record before you all vote, okay? Otherwise, we will bring it back in a couple of weeks or whenever you decide to talk about it further, so, thank you.
Mr. Massey, Mr. Massey, a quick question. Lapse, a lap, lapse in the ordinance, it's not like a, it's not like a criminal ordinance where you, you know, where, where you'd be really, really afraid to have a lapse. I mean, what is, what's the real impact of a lapse of a couple of weeks in this?
The issue would be that if, if somebody comes in for permitting, it, when, in the interim between the time that the ordinance is in effect, and by the time you make your, we decide what we're going to do about the no-impact fee zones, if they, we, you know, they could be in a position where it, that strangely, it, it, you know, uh, different than any of their other neighboring projects or neighboring developers, they may have to pay impact fees where no one else has had to pay impact fees. It becomes kind of an equity issue, perhaps, so that's, that's, that's the concern.
So, we just need to give people a heads up when they come in that that's the case right now, that's all.
I think, though, what he's saying is, some of these areas that you do want to exempt will, that, will, will be subject to payment of the multimodal fee during this interim period of time.
Right, but if we're talking, but if we're talking, if we're talking about a few weeks, it's not a big deal.
Well, if, you know, it actually, I, if they apply during that timeframe, they're gonna be subject to the multimodal fee.
The determination of impact fee is made at the time of permitting, that, so that's when it's, that, that's the critical, uh, point in a project where the determination is made, so.
Morris, is it possible to backdate it, um, if it's approved in a month? I mean, I hope it's not approved at all, but if we approve it, is it possible to backdate it to, um, today?
Um, not if some, not. I mean, it, the, the issue, though, I, it, it, it would be problematic, because the permit would have been already issued, and the determination would have been made at the time of permitting, Councilman Carlson, so that's, that's the problem.
All right, anybody else?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, Councilman Gude.
You know, I understand, you know, legal tries, tries to protect it at all costs, but sometimes we, we have to just go ahead and do what we have to do. Um, I do believe that we need to continue the item, I think that you can, those few, I don't, I don't think there's a, a, a astronomical people right now that, that, they're looking for the impact fee multimodal right now. Maybe a couple, I don't think it's a total, so we, we can stand and get, get with those folks if it does, uh, turn out to be longer than, than usual at the timeframe. But, again, I'd like to put a motion on the floor to continue this, this item until, uh, staff has met with each council member to look at the ideas, any changes to, to bring back before voting at a particular time, sir.
Okay.
The other thing.
Excuse us.
Morris Massey, one other suggestion, I mean, if you all want it to, so there's no lapse, uh, you could approve this on first reading today with a direction for us to look at modifying the maps for some, to, uh, Councilman Dingfelder's, uh, suggestion, uh, and bring that back in a short period of time and/or have a further presentation or further conversation with council members about the purpose of the no-impact fee zones as well, so that's clear before, uh, i- i- in a very short period of time, uh, you know, what, make sure you're comfortable with this for a longer period of time, so that, that would be a suggestion.
In other words, approve the map as is, and then come back and possibly amend the map.
Direction for us to come back with it, within thirty days or something with.
I, I like, I like your idea, but here, let me modify it slightly. Maybe we could approve the, approve the ordinance on first reading, but direct staff to come back with two, with two sets of maps, okay? Uh, and then we'd, we'd approve, we'd decide which map we want to attach on second, on second reading. Uh, would that be acceptable, Mr. Massey, Ms. Zelman? Legally, legally.
Legal, legally, I mean, we're making, it could, it could, we're making it much smaller. It's a, it, the question's whether it's such a dramatic change, whether we would have to go back to first reading, but, um, that's certainly something we could look at and, and entertain. So, I think that might be a better way to do this at this point in time, given your questions, Councilman Dingfelder, so. So I think that's a good suggestion.
All right, Mr. Goods, I think, I think that accomplishes your point because second reading is two weeks from now, uh, I would assume. And, um.
That's fine, sir. I, I mean, I, that's fine about the maps, but I have some other questions. I'm sure Mr. Carlson has a question and maybe some other things that might need to be added or deleted from this particular ordinance. So the maps are fine, I give it to you on, but I want to make sure there's a discussion, uh, uh, fur, uh, further down the line in reference to this, uh, this ordinance. So I can, I can amend the motion in reference to a, a second reading, uh, bring it back for a second reading with whatever changes that we may be looking to make once, uh, staff has met with all the council members to see what their ideas are to bring that back. But I think we're looking maybe for some changes here.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
May I remind you, counsel, that this is a legislative matter. Uh, that's why it's on your agenda as item number two, and there is no public hearing. The ordinance is being presented for first reading consideration. It's being moved and it would be set for a second reading, and that's when you would have a public hearing. So just a reminder that when it comes back to you, whether it has one set of maps or two set of maps, and frankly, um, that's going to require, uh, what would happen, you know, a legal analysis as to what would happen if you, um, shrunk the, um, the area, whether that's a significant change. Because, uh, let me just say that the maps are, and Morris, right, would agree, that the maps are part of this ordinance. The cancers, I mean, they are, you know, if, when you approve this ordinance, you are in effect having the maps that are attached to it, unless they're substituted and that might bring it back to first reading, it may not. And that's, that's a question for the legal department. But just a reminder that, um, when it does come back, it would be on second reading for an adoption public hearing.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Shelby.
Mr. Shelby is correct. Uh, I would echo everything he just said to you all and would agree with everything.
Perfect. All right, Councilman Dingfelder, you had made a motion originally. Um, what is your, what is the pleasure here?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna modify the, uh, the motion. I'll, I'll be glad to read the ordinance for approval.
Okay.
Uh, with, with direction, and, and I'm, I hope this is consistent with what Mr. Shelby and Mr. Massey said, but with direction to staff to bring back two sets, two sets of maps. Um, um, they can bring back the original set of maps as, as presented today. And also, and then the modified maps, and the modified maps would exclude, in the, in the East Tampa, uh, map, it would exclude the little tail, uh, down in the lower left corner, uh, this, the, uh, let's see, south, uh, southwest corner, uh, south of, south of the interstate, I four. And, uh, and then on the, on the, uh, Ebor map, it would exclude everything north of Fourth Avenue and everything west of Twenty Second Street. And, and, and Mr. Um, Mr. Citro, uh, I know there's a couple of little pockets up there and, and I guess if, if you want to identify those blocks or, or, or anything up there on the, up there near Palm, I think is where you're talking about. But, but if you look in the map, it's, 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 it's inside Nucio. So I'm not really, I'm not really sure where you were referring to, Mr. Citro, but I'm, I'm amenable to tweaking this if you want to tweak it now.
Uh, thank you very much, Councilman Dingfelder. I would prefer to talk to Mr. Vic B. Day. Uh, and if I, if I could amend the motion at, uh, at the next available opportunity.
Okay. All right, well, I'll leave my motion as it is. Um, and I'll be glad to read the ordinance, uh, according, accordingly, uh, with direction of Mr. Chairman.
All right, go ahead, sir. So you have your motion, it's going to be a two-part piece here. Correct?
Uh, yeah, so.
I.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, just for clarification, is this reading this, um, um, ordinance for first reading tied to, uh, and part of the fir, of the motion of Councilman Dingfelder?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, I'm going to read it, I'm going to read it for first reading and request that staff bring back effectively four maps, um, instead of the two maps that they've attached. And then, and then we can, we can def, decide at second reading which of those four maps we want to go with.
Okay, so go ahead, sir.
Okay. Um, item two, file number twenty twenty dash eight, chapter twenty-five, an ordinance being presented for first reading consideration, an ordinance of the city of Tampa, Florida relating to extending time of Ebor City and East Tampa, no fee zones for multimodal transportation impact fees and other general corrections. Amending Article Three Technical Provisions, Exhibit Four, Roman Number Four, no multimodal transportation impact fee zones, replacing maps twenty-five dot one G and twenty-five dot one I, providing for repeatable ordinances in conflict, providing for severability, providing an effective date, and providing staff brings us back four maps to choose from.
Do we have a second?
Um, this is Vera, I'll, I'll, I'll second it again under the idea that we are in effect, uh, that we're moving this along so that we don't have a gap, uh, but that we're in effect, in, in effect, uh, continuing it for further consideration upon second reading. That's my understanding. Uh, so for that regard, it, I, I think that's consistent with what Councilman Goods wanted. Um, so in, in, correct me if I'm wrong, under that view, I can second that.
Thank you.
We have, we have a second from Councilman, uh, Vera, roll call vote.
Vera.
Yes.
Goods.
What, as my vote, I want to make, make sure we are clear that representative Mr. Vera's last few comments that staff is, will be getting with council members. Because I think there's some other issues just besides the map that I want to discuss with them, but I'll vote yes this time.
Dingfelder.
Uh, yes, for first reading.
Manasgakko.
Yeah.
Carlson.
No.
Citro.
Yes.
Miranda.
Yes.
Motion carried with Carlson voting no.
Was there a motion for second, when, it's scheduled to come back, when, when we have that announced, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Second reading and adoption will be held on November fifth, twenty twenty at nine thirty A M. Thank you very much.
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you. Next item that was pulled by council.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, before we move off that item, excuse me for asking. But that date is af, the second reading is after the expiration of this as we speak, is that correct, Mr. Massey?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Massey, so.
I'm sorry.
Excuse me, I, I apologize, what was the question? I apologize, Morris Massey.
The second reading, could you announce that again to the, uh, Madam Clerk?
Yes.
The adoption, the adoption, the adoption public, let me get, the second reading and adoption public hearing, please.
Will be held on November fifth, twenty twenty at nine thirty A M.
And the question, Mr. Massey, is, is that not after the expiration date of the?
Yes, it's after the expiration, that, that is correct. Is there not another date? I thought October fifteenth would, would be the next date for second reading.
October fifteenth would not allow for us to publish in time.
Today's the first, and it, only ten days are required for publication, uh, Madam Clerk.
Correct. And the issue we have is that we do not have the newspaper company that we previously had where we could turn around and, and publish within the two weeks. So that's why we have been having to push it out three weeks or more.
Mr. Chairman.
Sure. Just right.
Is it possible that we can do this, uh, within the confines of the timeframe by putting it, uh, having a, after the CRA meeting, a special call meeting on this one item?
Three.
What day would that be then?
The, the CRA meeting is next week, so that would not work, um, I believe. May, uh, maybe after the, the workshop is a special call on the twenty-second, might be.
But would that also then be after the expiration date, but by two days? Am I, am I correct?
Yeah, it would, it would, you're right, you're.
I don't.
Two days is better than two weeks, I think, that's the.
Would the clerk be able to accomplish publication timely?
Yes, we will be able to accomplish it for October twenty-second.
Okay, so can we modify that to a second read coming back, uh, October twenty-second?
Yes, sir, I will put on Oc, October twenty-second at, would you like nine A M? Would this be after the workshop session?
Let me see how, let me see how this works. Would this be a special call for that one purpose, for that public hearing?
Yeah.
While he's looking, let me make the record, let, let me set the record straight. This issue of second reading timing has nothing to do with my questions or my, my suggestions on the map alter, alterations. Um, obviously, this, this must have slipped through the cracks because this, this should have been dealt with months ago. So I just want to make sure that people don't get mad at me for the special call meeting because, uh, this, this, this issue would have come up no matter what on, for the, about the timing of the second reading.
May I, may I also just say, counsel, with regard to setting a special call meeting, uh, be very conscious of when you set it and at what time, because remind you that this is, um, a public meeting and a public hearing. So what you're going to have is, um, is going to be, frankly, no way to say this is going to be a simple decision by city council saying we're going to take these two maps. There may be substantial amount of people who have an interest in this, who will somehow want to communicate either in person or however, by ever means, um, before council takes a vote on this. So whatever time you allow is going to have to be sufficient to not impact the rest of your agenda. So it's your count, your call, but I just want to let you know, again, that's why I brought it to your attention earlier. This is going to come back at a public hearing. So whatever council's pleasure is, we can certainly set a special call if that's council's intention.
Wouldn't you like a special call? Would, would, is there a?
Also, counsel, also this can count, you know, a, a suggestion, a suggestion, um, might be to even consider if you want to take this at an evening meeting. But then you have to figure out when that would have to be. Um, right now, right now, did you take a roll call vote, Madam Clerk? Yes, you did.
Yes, I did.
So right now, this thing, as we sit here now, is set for November twelfth. At what time, nine thirty A M?
Actually, November fifth at nine thirty.
Oh, November fifth at nine thirty A M. That's where we stand right now, counsel.
And do you have the evening session of October twenty-second?
Mr. Chairman, I hear no response from counsel.
What is the preference?
I think it will probably have to be a evening session.
There's a motion, there's a motion that's made of counsel, it would have to be a motion to amend, it would have to be seconded.
We have a motion, do we have anything, any discussion?
What's the recommended motion, Mr. Shelby? I don't, I, you've lost me, everybody's lost me.
Oh, no, change the, no, the que, the question was, I, I just pointed out and I apologize, but I wanted the record to cle, be clear that when she announced that date, she announced the date after the expiration of this, the ordinance now in effect. I didn't know whether council, I wanted council to be clear whether that was council's intention. If it's not, then you have the option now to make it different, allowing the clerk to be able to comply with the legally required um, notice requirements and publication. So if council wants to change the date from what the clerk announced, council has certainly the power to do that, assuming that the clerk says she can meet the stat, the statutory requirements of publication.
So what, so what date, what date is the alternative? That's what I got confused on.
We have October twenty-second, we can do it after the workshop, do a special call, or we can put it in the evening.
Okay, well, all right, so I'll move to slightly modify the second reading date to be the twenty-second. Uh, we'll just say ten o'clock, uh, um, and, and see when we can squeeze it in for second reading.
Twenty-second, counsel, I'm sorry, but I, I have to, I have to just inform you that is a workshop date and that date has been pretty much cleared, um, for, for, um, certain items, uh, uh, from land development. Um, and the thing is, you would have to do it as a special call because a workshop does not contemplate a public hearing.
That's what, I thought that's what I, what I was just told, was the twenty-second special call meeting.
So, but the thing is, you're going to send a special call meeting for whatever time after ten o'clock that that workshop ends, wraps up. Is that my understanding?
Is that a special call on the October twenty-second immediately after the workshop?
Well, and that, and that begs the question as to what, it is a noticed and public meeting, a time needs to be set.
Well, that's why I said ten o'clock, um, because we can set it for ten and whenever Mr. Chairman is ready to, to tee it up, he can tee it up. So we have to set it for a time. We have to set it for a time, so that's why I said ten o'clock. And the intent is that whenever Mr. Chairman is ready to tee it up, he can tee it up.
So, I, no, I, I, it, it normally doesn't work that way, uh, councilman. Normally what happens is you don't, you don't usually stop a workshop and then go into a special call and then resume your workshop. I don't believe that's ever been done. Um, and I should also point out.
That wasn't the intent. The intent was when the workshop's over, anytime after ten o'clock, then he can do, he can call the special call meeting.
That's true. That true is, that is a correct statement. The only thing is, I just want to remind you, counsel, if you look at your calendar, you're going to have to come back at five oh one for a full night meeting. So it may very well run to the end. If it's council's pleasure, I don't have, I don't have a position. I just want council to make an informed decision because, um, because once it's, once this motion goes out there and it's on the agenda, it's noticed and it really can't be altered. So I just want to be clear, that's all. I have no position one way or the other, just, I'm just looking for direction.
All right. We have a motion from Councilman Dingfelder. Do we have a second to that for October twenty-second special call, um, immediately after following the workshop? We set it for ten o'clock, it could be ten oh four, eleven thirteen, whenever. But after the workshop is done, it's noticed, we go into the special call. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Councilman Goods. Um, let's take a roll call vote.
Vera.
Yes.
Goods.
Yes.
Dingfelder.
Yes.
Manasgakko.
Yes.
Carlson.
No.
Citro.
Yes.
Miranda.
Yes.
Motion carried with Carlson voting no. Second reading and adoption will be held on October twenty-second, twenty twenty, as a special call meeting at ten o'clock A M or immediately following the workshop session.
Yep. Perfect. Thank you. Thank you, everybody. All right. Another item that's pulled, we'll go back to item fifteen, then twenty-two, then twenty-three, and then we'll continue with the agenda at fifty-seven. So item fifteen, Councilman Dingfelder, you pulled this item.
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, item fifteen, um, I don't know if Chuck is on the line or, or Gene or Chuck is going to speak to this water, this water issue. So item fifteen, oh, apparently we contract with a company called Mainzer Management, M A I N Z E R, DBA tech staff. And they, I guess in the past, they have gone around patrolling the city to make sure that people are watering on the appropriate day. When they aren't, when they catch them not watering on the appropriate day, I guess we've given them the authority to issue tickets. We pay them a hundred and ninety, in the estimated amount of a hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars per year to do this. In the past, I've asked if we could issue warnings and the water department says, no, 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 warnings don't work. My que, my question to the water department was, what kind of money are we generating out of this hundred, we pay a hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars, what kind of money are we generating? Um, from this nine, hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars and where are we ticketing people? Um, Mr. Mr. Walters and his staff provided a map. And Mr. Vera, I think you'd be really interested in this map. I don't know if you've seen it yet. But in New Ta, in New Tampa, they issued four hundred and ninety-five tickets. In South Tampa or in District, that's, that's Mr. Vera's district. In District Four, uh, they issued a hundred and four tickets, Mr. Carlson's district. Um, in Mr. Manasgakko's district, uh, they issued forty-nine tickets. And I don't know, that's probably spread between Seminole Heights and West Tampa. And, and in East Tampa, they issued zero tickets. So I don't even know if they're, I don't even know if they're, if they're patrolling East Tampa. And I don't know if that's by direction or what. I thought the disparity, especially in New Tampa, with five times the amount of tickets issued to anywhere else in the whole city is rather alarming. I don't know, I don't know what that's about. with five times the amount of tickets issued to anywhere else in the whole city is rather alarming. I don't know, I don't know what that's about. But the, but the bottom line is, is the money generated total comes out to $50,000 and we're paying $193,000 to do it. And I know it's in the name of water conservation, but I don't know if we've really studied this carefully. And that's what bothered me about this item.
Uh, Councilman Dingfelder, this is Gene Duncan. I have a Director Chuck Weber is going to give an explanation for this item. Uh, this is.
I'm sorry, I called him Walter because we used to have a. A Walter, but. Sorry, sorry Chuck.
Different person, different time. Uh, we've got a methodology that we'll give a quick explanation for and share how this is an industry standard practice that has a lot of evidence of benefits in terms of fiscally as well as environmentally. So I will let Director Chuck Weber give you a quick explanation of our methodology and the reasons why we believe this is a good investment of dollars to support our, our water system.
Good morning, counsel. Chuck Weber, Water Department Director. The, the city does practice year-round watering restrictions to conserve water. And the, the water use restriction enforcement is an important part of that conservation program. With it, we have reduced the number of observed violations that started with over 4,000 in 2002. We've reduced it down to approximately 335 in 2020. That's a large reduction in the violations and it's a lot of water saved. In fact, the reduction in violation comes out to about a little over 2 million gallons per day saved every year. And when you multiply that by the cost to just to treat and pump the 2 million gallons a day, it results in an operational savings of over $850,000 a year. And, you know, compared to the $194,000, that's about a return on investment of about 340%. So the, you know, you can look at it from that perspective. It's not just the money that we receive as revenue from the citations. It's the savings in water that really pays for this program. Another thing to consider is that, you know, we're not alone in our enforcement program. It's, it is a standard component of conservation programs. Hillsboro, Pasco, Pinellas counties, as well as the city of St. Pete, Newport Richie, they all have enforcement programs and staff as part of those programs. Just to kind of address the, the geography of where we're seeing the violations, typically these violations are related to irrigation systems, timers, and how things are set. And what we find, particularly in New Tampa, our watering restrictions are a challenge for folks who live in neighborhoods with associations that require green lawns and a lot of watering. So it's a very, it's a tough challenge for certain areas of the cities where you have neighborhood associations that require certain standards. And then you also have to deal with the watering restrictions that only allow for watering twice a week. And with that, that concludes my remarks.
All right. Any other questions, Councilman Dingfelder? Councilman Goode?
And, and I, I hope it's not a crazy question, but just looking at, we're, we're paying somebody almost $200,000 to check on people who might be in violation of water conservation. But, but my thing is, don't we have, you know, what I call just the water meter maze to go check the, check people's water numbers every, every, every month? Don't we have code enforcement in these areas that, I mean, see somebody watering their lawns? I'm just, just curious. It couldn't have been a savings? I mean, I'm just looking at that number now that, that didn't go abroad it up. Seems kind of odd.
Well, that's a good question. I believe that tech staff, it's a staff of free people that are doing the patrolling. There, there is a large area to patrol. And we do patrol the whole city. And, you know, it is something that we have chosen to outsource. The business is a small local business. So it's 100% participation there. And it's, it, it, when, when you look at the cost of staffing that many people, it, it's very, it, it's a very appropriate sort of way to staff.
And Chairman, if I may? Yes, go ahead. And, and thank you, Councilman Dingfelder, for bringing this up. You're always a very observant, hardworking, detail-oriented citywide councilman. And so thank you for that. You know, I'll, I'll, I'll work offline with water on some educational issues for 33647 in U-Tampa, to the extent that's necessary to address this. I won't take up council's time. But I will say this, out of those several hundred watering restriction tickets that were given, my house was one of them. So there you go. I got a ticket a couple of months ago, which I promptly paid. So, you know, education is certainly something that this homeowner needed and I'm sure a lot of homeowners need. We'll, we'll take a look at that issue closely. But, but thank you, sir. Thank you for bringing that up and thank everybody for your work.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On, on water restriction days, you know, everyone has the right to water their grass twice a week. It's the last number of your address that gives you a certain date. For instance, if you end in 0, 1, 2, or 3, you're going to water on Monday and Thursdays. If you end in 4, 5, and 6, you go water on Tuesdays and Fridays. And if your ending address is 7, 8, or 9, it's Wednesday or Saturdays. And mine is not of the above. I don't have any grass. I got rocks. However, it's a compounded by another issue. As this city grows and continues to grow, and thank God it is, when you look at the water situation, you just can't produce all the water you want without having a permit to do so. We have a permit for 82 million gallons a day on a daily average. So if we do have this and you keep doing the, the things that people like to do is have green grass and that, God bless them. Thank God they do because I don't. Then they, the 82 million becomes a problem when you have a situation that you need water. See, when you have plenty of water, you don't need it. You don't have any water is when you need it. That's the water situation. Very difficult and very simple, but it's very difficult to, to address. So I'm always, I've always voted for this. It's a cost-saving, environmental. It does everything we need to do. It would be much costlier if we didn't have anything going on at all. Because when you go and butt heads with 82 million gallons, the fines could be much larger than what you're paying now. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Everybody else?
Chair, if I may?
Mr. Citro, go ahead.
Question staff is, is, are these just water restrictions as far as days of watering? Or also how they are watering the lawns with the, the, the question of whether or not their sprinklers are working properly?
Restrictions are primarily based on the day of the week that they're allowed to irrigate and then also the time of day.
All right. Thank you. I posed that question because I hope we're also looking at the city of Tampa and how we're watering our areas. As I travel up Hillsboro, Himes, Kennedy, and Bayshore, no matter how much you water that pavement or how much you water that sidewalk, it's not going to grow. So I'm hoping we're also looking at the city of Tampa and the way we're watering our areas too. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. Anybody else?
Yes, sir.
Who's that?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Mr. Weber and I apologize for messing up your name. It's been a while since we've seen each other face to face. Are you still on the line?
Yes, I am, sir.
Okay. You came up, I have a couple of questions. You came up with the number. And it just, I don't really understand the methodology. You said, we, by doing this program, we are saving 2 million gallons per day. What's the methodology for, for approving that? How, that seems, I don't understand how you, how you prove that. I mean.
Well, when you, typically irrigation systems, when we find them in violation of the watering restrictions, they're set up to water every day. And so if you look at the amount of flow that you get through an irrigation system and the time that it's on, you can come up with the total amount of gallons. And from there, you can figure out if, if the timer was left and set at that, how many days, what the volume would be for those days, project that out for a year, and from there you can get the total.
The bottom line is, is that the, the, my understanding, my visiting this issue in the past is that when they give you a ticket, they don't knock on your door. I, I don't think they knock on your door and, and give, you know, and, and and give you a little educational course and, and walk over and look at your meter and say, oh, you're, you're set on seven days a week. I think they, I think you get mailed a ticket in the mail. Isn't that correct?
I don't believe that that's always the case. I, I'd have to double check and I'm, I'm happy to do that and to give you some information about how the tickets are delivered. But they do follow up to ensure that the citation has resulted in a change in behavior.
How?
By, by driving by and coming to check at the same times that they found it in violation before.
Okay. All right. So, but the bottom line is, is I, I think 2 million gallons a day, I think, is, is based on a lot of assumptions. Number one. Number two is, when you talk about.
I apologize.
Can I finish my, can I finish my thoughts before I get interrupted all the time, please?
I was just correcting, correcting a statistic that has been repeated a couple of times. It's, it's 2 million gallons, gallons average annual save per year. So I apologize for the interruption.
All right. I'm sorry, Gene. I thought that was legal jumping in. I apologize. So, Gene, I'm sorry. So I said 2 million gallons a day and you're saying 2 million gallons a year?
Yes, and I'll let Director Weber speak more to that if, if you'd like.
Okay, hold on. So 2 million gallons a year is our savings from this program, which is that's a, that's a tiny little drop in the bucket. We, what is our system right now?
It, I, I apologize to interrupt. It is 2 million gallons a day, annual average savings. So, so it is, it's just a little over 2 million gallons a day.
Oh, 2 million gallons a day, annual average savings. Okay. So it, it depends on the season, obviously.
Oh, again, I'm, I'm sorry. It's, it's over that, it's 2 billion gallons per day saved per that year. So again, so sorry for the interruption and the confusion. But I just want to make sure that statistic was, was being spoken to accurately. So again, so sorry to interrupt.
That's all right. Audio meetings are difficult. So listen, the other question I had, Chuck, is you talked about $850,000. I'm not sure what that, was that per day, per year?
That would be per year.
Okay. And my question, my question on that is, is we don't lose money when we, when we sell water. If, if those people, if those, if those people, they have to, it's not like they're getting that water for free if they use it on the wrong day. I'm not saying they should use it on the wrong day. But, but I don't want council to be misled that, that this is almost a million dollar loss to the water department. Frankly, the water department makes more money when people use more water. I, I've had that numerous conversations with, with other staff members in the past about that. So can you clarify that $850,000? That's not a loss off your bottom line.
Uh, Mr. Dingfelder, if I could jump in ahead of Chuck, I think that the loss is the loss of this resource that is very limited within certain times of the day or year. So when there's a restriction or there's a timeframe set and people are violating that timeframe because we're managing this precious resource, that is the loss that we're seeing to our, our system. As, as Mr. Miranda was stating, there's a conservation aspect to this that we need to be enforcing and monitoring how this precious resource is being utilized by, by the public. And I'll let Chuck take it from there.
So, the, I mean, Gene, I agree with you. Conservation is important. But, but I think we can get to conservation by marketing. And I think this money is, I don't think we're getting cost benefit and a return on our investment. We're spending $200,000 to get $50,000 in fines back. Okay, which is, we're spending four times the amount of money. Water, other, the other water customers are spending four times the amount of money to, to spank these, these bad apples. Okay. And, and I don't think that's, I don't think that's the best use of that $200,000. I think the best use of that $200,000 is with marketing. And, and Mr. Mr. Viera spoke to this. He's going to do his own private marketing up in New Tampa, which is great. But I think we could really take advantage of that $200,000. And why don't we, why don't we, you know, use that $200,000 this year for a blanketed marketing campaign instead of, you know, instead of running around, you know, issuing these fines? And then look a year or two later and see how much water we've saved doing marketing instead of, instead of these fines. And, and maybe we could do some warnings with the marketing in, in, instead of that.
Uh, Mr. Dingfelder, I'm going to ask Jan McLean to, to chime in a little bit on the regulatory requirements that go along with this particular action we're asking you to take today. So Jan, if you could share a little bit on, on the regulatory side, that might be helpful.
Absolutely. Good morning again. Jan McLean with the Office of the City Attorney. I just wanted to underscore that the implementation of a conservation plan is a condition of our water use permit. There are certain activities that are listed within the rules of the Water Management District. And one of the premier activities that they look to for a public supply is to implement irrigation restriction enforcement. The city of Tampa's had, as you well know, Mr. Dingfelder, because you've been through this with droughts before, one of the better enforcement activities in the area. We report both to Tampa Bay Water and to the Water Management District what our activities are, the tickets that we've issued. And they look very seriously at this as one of the key components of our conservation plan. It's not to say that education and marketing isn't also a, a key component. But this one is something that they really feel sends a message and results in water conservation. And so that's why we've been continuing to do these efforts.
Thank you for the report. I, I won't support the item. I think it's, it's not, it's not the best way to go. And frankly, I think we could do more water conservation with, with a, a strong educational campaign. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Would anybody like to move item number 15? This is item number 15 that was pulled from the agenda. Do we have a motion to, to move this item?
I'll move it, Mr. Chairman, Miranda.
We have a motion from Councilman Miranda. Do we have a second?
Uh, Viera, second.
A second from Viera. If we can have roll call vote, please.
Viera?
Yes.
Goode?
Yes.
Ding Felder? Maniscalco?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Citro?
Yes.
Miranda?
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously.
Thank you very much. Next item that was pulled is item number 22, then item number 23, and then we'll continue with the staff reports at 57. So item number 22.
Good morning, Chair. Good morning, counsel. Vic B. Day, Director of Mobility Department, here to address item number 22. Item number 22 does two things. One is it amends the schedule of fees for parking related to Chapter 15 of the city code, Section 15-26. As part of this item, we're also rescinding a previous schedule of fees pursuant to Chapter 15-26 as well, as it relates to Al Lopez Park. That item basically is being rolled into the proposed fee schedule. And so I'll just give a little bit of a background on this item. The last time we comprehensively addressed parking fees and what we charge as a city, which is among the lowest in the nation for cities our size, was in 2004. Uh, I think a couple of times after that, like most recently in twenty eighteen, uh, we'd made some modifications uh, to facilitate a fee increase uh, for special events from four dollars to ten dollars, still way below market. Uh, and uh, to be able to collect uh, parking fees at Al Lopez Park uh, in support of Raymond James Stadium events. Uh, so we're proposing this rate adjustment, but it also comes with uh, a policy initiative as well. Uh, what we're proposing in essence are up updated rates for on-street and off-street parking. Uh, this is much overdue primarily because as a parking enterprise, uh, we will be in the red starting next year. Uh, and and that is rare as far as city parking enterprises go typically because it's E-based. Uh, they're in the black and they're able to meet their expenses with the revenues. And we will not be able to. There are several reasons for this. Uh, some of them have to do with, you know, opportunities lost to make revenues uh, due to certain agreements that we have, uh, having historic low rates uh, generally as well. But there are some structural things that we're also addressing as part of this action uh, specifically related to transient pricing. So our uh, hourly rates for parking in the downtown area, for example, the on-street rates are uh, lower than off-street, meaning garages are actually more expensive. And this has uh, side effects in that drivers now are more incentivized to park on-street and may park there longer, which adds to congestion, which adds to uh, fuel emissions. But it also impacts economic development. Typically on-street spaces, you want them to be transient. You want people to uh, come in, do their business and leave. Uh, and and if they're going to be there for longer than two, three hours, then
Uh, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, I have a point of order. I have a point of order. And I apologize Vic for interrupting. So the last couple of days, I was asking for a comparison of the old parking, the the current parking rates in each of the garages compared to the proposed parking rates. And la- and last night or this morning, I got this PowerPoint, which in a few slides from now is going to show us exactly what I asked for. But my my concern is this, and and maybe I'm just, maybe I'm at, maybe I'm out of line on this and you can correct me. But Vic, have you have you gone around to each council member and gone through these charts and tables? Because we're we're changing the parking rates, not only for Al Lopez Field, but it appears, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but we're changing it for every parking garage uh, in, you know, downtown. And and you've already mentioned, we're also changing it for the on-street parking. So this is a major, a major decision. I know I haven't had a chance to look at those charts and to talk to you about it. Um, have you had a chance to to go through this, these charts in detail with the rest of council? And if not, I would say this item is really susceptible to a two-week continuance, which would give you the opportunity to do that with each council member individually before we spend a lot of time uh, discussing it as a group. In other words, I know this councilman hasn't hasn't had time to to digest it. Um, so that's that's it. That's it.
Yeah, thank you, Councilman. I can address that. So we've done a few things. Uh, one is, uh, we've discussed the imminent parking rate changes, the rationale, uh, and what the structure would look like with all councilmen. Uh, as to the specific rates and what they're going to be, that is part of the packet that was submitted by the legal department. And it's also part of your agenda packet. Uh, the rate resolution itself
No, 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 but but I I beg to disagree. Ms. Hardy does a great job. But but all she did was she gave us the old ordinance, the old resolution and the new resolution. But it wasn't a side-by-side comparison until I received your PowerPoint. And I can't be, you can't expect me to go through that ten-page resolution and s- and and see, oh, okay, this is what we're going to do in Pamayore before and after. That would have taken me five hours. So now you've got a good side-by-side comparison. Anyway, I'm taking up time. My point is, is I think we should continue this item in two weeks so we can all have a chance to look at this PowerPoint and see exactly what you're proposing. Otherwise, it's really not fair to council and the community to just throw it on us and say, here it is, vote for it.
Chairman?
I'll figure it. The chair, that was that was my point earlier. You know, a lot of employees have called because they've heard about these changes. And that was my concern early on when we talked about making these changes. Because again, you know, you have employees that make a certain salary. And when you're deduct deducting their parking, uh, you know, and 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 their weekly, I mean, bi-weekly salaries, uh, it becomes a a a burden. And I know we may have to look at some things down the road, but I just want administration to understand that some employees are hurting when they're paying for parking every day or by the week. And you have some employees who are not paying for parking. And I know that it may be a contractual thing, but I just want to make sure administration, we may have to look at that because some people are hurting more than others. And we have to make sure that the the plan was kind of level a little bit. Are you a backside?
Thank you very much.
So if I could address uh, Councilman Dingfelder's concern first. Uh, so the side-by-side comparison, I do have those slides right now. I'm willing to present those slides. The rate resolution does show the minimum and the maximum rate. And there's a reason why we've structured it that way. And that is my presentation today as well. Uh, as far as why we're doing and what the impact is and what we've done in order to ensure equity, which is very critical to us in these rates, uh, we have briefed each council member, uh, as as you are likely aware. We've also done community engagement on that through the citizens advisory committees for Ebor City or the Channel District ERA, as well as the Downtown Partnership. Uh, we've also coordinated with other uh, institutional partners within our parking enforcement area.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, I I'd like to move for a two-week continuance on this. This was on the consent agenda. Okay, this impacts. And I agree with Mr. Goos. Not only does it impact our employees, but it impacts all people who come down downtown to park, whether or not they're transient or 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 regular monthly parkers. I think that you can't, the administration can't throw these things at us that are extremely complex, that are extremely detailed, put it on consent and just and just say, okay, we're going to bless this. And Vic, with all due respect, you've been talking in generalities for a couple of months about these concepts. But now we're down to specifics and and we should have had this PowerPoint side-by-side comparison a couple of weeks ago, you know, provided to us separately so we could look at it, ask any questions, et cetera. I don't want to take everybody's time now. That's not fair. So I'm going to move a two-week continuance. Um, I don't think it makes any difference, um, you know, in terms of implementation, et cetera. But it sure makes a lot of difference in terms of our ability to to vote intelligently on these things.
All right. So is that a motion for a two-week continuance for this to come back on October fifteenth?
Yes, sir, under staff reports.
We have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Councilman Carlson. Uh, let's take a roll call vote.
Vera?
Yes.
Goos?
Yes.
Dingfelder?
Yes.
Meniscoco?
Yeah.
Carlson?
Yes.
Citro?
Uh, Mr. Chair, I I have I have been in touch with Mr. V. Day. And I have I have looked at this with several groups that I've met with, especially uh, people downtown, Downtown Partnership. And this has been discussed for many, many months. Uh, I will say yes to this motion. However, I I I am strongly urging all the council members to to vote for this. Uh, I do hear Councilman Goos, but this is a is a is a much needed, uh, especially with our for our parking in the downtown area and other places around the city. But I will vote for this continuance. Thank you, Mr.
Thank you.
Miranda?
Yes, I and I understand what Mr. Citrus is talking about, and I agree with him. Uh, there've been studies, in fact, that study even included uh, how many vacant space you had in the parking garages with some type of system, using computer system that would tell the people downtown where to go park without them spending and and polluting the downtown area more. They could tell them right where the parking spot was so they can go right to it. Thank you very much. I I'll vote yes.
Motion
And Mr. Chair, oh.
That's Councilman Vera?
Just very briefly, I I I just wanted to say, I've always had the view that when a council member, ninety-seven percent of the time, asks for a reasonable continuance on something as a as a courtesy, I'll support it. I mean, I'm I'm, you know, ready to proceed on this. But a- again, as a courtesy to our colleague, that that's my rationale, just to make that clear. I always I always believe in that ninety-seven percent of the time. Uh, thank you.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair Carlson?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I just wanted to say the same thing. Um, I I wanted to support Councilman Dingfelder. But I appreciate Mr. V. Day's um, analysis of this. And whoever it was in the administration that was proactive about this, um, I appreciate that. Um, uh, you know, I have a business that um, will be directly affected by this because we pay for all the parking uh, for our staff in Ebor. And um, uh, I, we can't have enterprises like this that lose money. We have to find a way to to cover the costs. Or if we can't, then we need to figure out how to sell it or or have a long-term lease on it. Um, it, it, these, these things, when they were built, were meant to uh, spur on development and solve short-term problems. In the long term, they have to at least break even. Ideally, they would be a profit center so that they can fund um, other per needed programs within the city. Thank you.
Thank you. But uh, just a reminder, do not cut the clerk off when she's reading the uh, vote. Then wait till she finishes and then if people want to speak, clerk, go ahead with the uh, read the the vote again, just for clarity.
Thank you, sir. Motion carried unanimously.
Thank you very much. Let's go to item number three, which is the final pulled item. Then we'll continue with the agenda as it was printed. Item number twenty-three.
Mr. Chairman, just as a point, this is a, yes, sir, just as a point of order on item fifteen, which was the water, the water issue. Um, I think the clerk announced the unanimous vote, but but I think we need to set the, correct the record that it was six to one Dingfelder voting no. And I might have heard it wrong, but I thought I heard her say unanimous.
That is correct. That's my mistake. I thought you said yes. So with that being said, it's six to one with Dingfelder voting no.
Thank you. I'm sorry. I won't mumble next time.
Thank you very much. Item
Item twenty-three. Um, so this is a contract with American Express. I guess we do it regularly uh, where we, you know, we pay them their their fee. Um, you know, because we all know American Express charges a little bit more than than Visa or MasterCard. And so I asked that, uh, Mr. Rahero, Dennis, um, some questions about it. And Dennis, are you on the line?
I am, sir.
Okay. So the questions I asked to Dennis, and I'll just run through them. Um, I I said, do we, you know, um, do we, do we eat that? You know, and this is not just about the AMX fee. This is about the Visa fee and the MasterCard fee and whatever other credit cards we use that we accept. But um, you know, do we, do we pass, do we pass along this fee to the people who use the cards? Um, you know, and if not, why not? Um, how much money is involved, um, et cetera? And those are the questions I asked Mr. Rahero. And if he could answer those questions for all of council's benefit. And let's have a a a quick discussion about the these credit card uh, issues.
Yes, sir. This is Dennis Rahero, uh, Chief Financial Officer. Yep. Past practice for the city has been not to pass along these charges per se. A past practice citywide is to simply establish what we want to gain in revenues. And then we set the charges to meet those requirements. Now, uh, one of the difficulties with that, of course, as we discussed, is you have uh, fees tacked upon credit card charges that from the city's perspective, we simply absorb, separate and apart the revenue. Of course, any number of factors can influence whether we meet those revenue projections, you know, the economy, customer usage, et cetera. But typically, we simply establish a charge and we make the revenue from it. I'll give you an example. For fiscal year twenty nineteen, we had almost three million credit card transactions, receiving a total of almost a hundred and thirty-five million dollars. And the credit card fees were nearly three million dollars, or about two percent of the total. So it's a significant amount of funding that that is charged as part of the credit card. As we also discussed, of course, it allows flexibility to our customer base, you know, to 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 pay us their money. We're very limited, for example, if we can find it to cash, et cetera, of course. And in this day and age, we wouldn't consider doing that. But if you're a customer and you pay cash, for instance, or you pay by check, or you pay credit card, your fee is the same from the city's perspective. We do not add a surcharge associated with the credit card fee.
So so let's 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 uh, have an example like like we were just talking about. If I'm a, if I'm a monthly parker in 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 one of our city garages downtown and my, and I pay a hundred dollars a month, if I if I write a check, if I write a check, it's, I pay a hundred dollars. If I use a credit card, I pay the same hundred dollars. But the person who writes the check is subsidizing the the person who who uses a credit card. In other words, my rate, because I'm a check payer, is a tiny bit higher as a, as compared to the person who had the convenience of a credit card. Um, is is that one way to look at it, Mr. Rahero?
Well, first, let me let me clarify. If if, and I use that example, if if your charge is a hundred dollars and you pay by check and your your charge is a hundred dollars and you pay by credit card, you're, if both customers are paying the same amount. Is uh, did I hear that correctly?
Yeah, they're they're paying the same amount, but the bottom line is, is the guy who's paying, the the guy who's paying by check is subsidizing the fee that we're being charged by the credit card guy.
Understood. Yes, it could be viewed that way.
Okay. And when when you and I had this discussion, you said if there would be a diff, there could be a different way of doing this, that we could actually char- and I, and I get this, I think I get this from the tax collector. When I pay my tax bill, there's an alternative to pay by credit card. But the tax collector says, if you pay by credit card, we're going to charge you, you know, two or three or five percent service fee for the honor and privilege of using that credit card. Okay? So so there is another way to do it. Isn't that true, Mr. Rahero?
Yes, sir. There's a few ways we could go about it. We could tack on to the the surcharge to those customers that pay credit cards. Or we could project how much that surcharge will cost the city and factor that into a charge for all customers.
Okay. So but I don't want to, I don't want to hurt all customers. I just think that if you want the convenience of paying by credit card, then you should have to pay, you should have to pay what, I don't think we should profit from it from it. But what if we're paying two or three percent more, which by the way, amounts to, I think you said two or three million dollars per year, I think we should recoup that money from the people who are using their credit cards. And I think you told me that it's, that wouldn't be that difficult. And frankly, that you might, as CFO, that you might actually support that.
A CFO, of course, I'd support anything that recoups charges uh, to the city. And we could research that in terms of not only the the different scenarios that we could implement here in the city of Tampa, but also, of course, what other localities are doing. It simply just hasn't been the pa- practice in the past here. And uh, another factor that I think you alluded to it, and and I'll elaborate on is it also provides some flexibility to our customers and their method of payment. Of course, you know, in terms of receiving payment for services, we would also, we would always want to provide the maximum flexibility.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, um, I I think it's a nice opportunity for the city to recoup some of that money. I'm I'm going to move that we approve uh, item twenty-three with AMX because no matter what, I think we should still give people the opportunity to use their AMX card. But when the meeting's done, I'm going to make a motion that staff investigate and come back to us on this credit card issue and and how we can recoup some of those credit char- credit card charges in the future.
All right. So therefore, that is a, to move item number twenty-three?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Ms. Rahero.
Yes, sir.
Do we have a second?
Second. Second to move twenty-three. I'd like to speak on it, please.
All right. Councilman Miranda with the second, and go ahead and speak, sir. Yes.
Thank you, Chairman. You know, convenience costs money. Anything you do, today's, today's world, although I understand what the debate is about, this case is two-point-one-five percent. And years ago, when I was part owner managing partner of Cafe Pepe, we didn't use credit card of American Express because they were like two-point-seven-five at that time, and the rest of them were two-ten, two-fifteen, whatever it was. So therefore, I didn't use it for many years. However, when you start doing an analysis, and I'm not saying this holds true to parking, I'm not going to compare food costs and going on buying theater tickets and buy anything else. But that also applies directly or indirectly to the same item. Yes, there's a charge, but it's also a convenience, that you know you're going to get paid. You don't know if the check is going to bounce. You don't know what, what else can happen. So there is a convenience of sort that you know that you can count on that revenue being there in the next forty-eight hours. A check may or may not go through. A check can be, you know, bounce, it can do a lot of things to you, and, and then you have to either write it off or go chase somebody for ten to twenty dollars, which I don't think you're going to do. So that's why the rates are done that way. I understand the conversation, but if we're going to do that, we are playing, you're right. When you go speak at, when you go pay your taxes, let's say it's ten thousand dollars, I'm just using that, yes, they're going to charge you because it's ten thousand dollars. And individually, it may equal to three million dollars, but if there was one, once individual making a payment of a hundred and thirty-five million, then I said, you darned toot, I want my money back because I'm getting three million dollars. But when you have, it's not one individual using that parking lot, it's tens of thousands of people using the parking lot, and it's built in for that purposes of getting the system going and working on, on something that is reasonable and you can account for it right away. But I'm going to support the motion. Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. All right, we have a second from Councilman Miranda. Let's take a roll call vote.
Vera.
Yes.
Goots.
Yes.
Dingfelder.
Yes.
Maniscalco.
Yeah.
Carlson.
Yes.
Tetro.
Yes.
Miranda.
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously.
All right. Thank you very much. That settles the polled items. We'll now go back to the agenda. I believe we begin with item number fifty-seven, with staff reports.
Good afternoon, council. This is Andrea Zelman, Deputy City Attorney. I did, I was supposed to provide you today with a draft apprenticeship ordinance. I did submit a memorandum asking for one more month. I also included in the memorandum just a brief status report to, to let you know the types of issues I've been researching and the types of people with whom I've been speaking about this. I don't know how much detail you wanted me to go into, but just to remind everyone, the issue is both Councilman Vera and, and offline Councilman Dingfelder had reached out about the question of adopting an ordinance similar to what the city of St. Petersburg did, where for every city contract of a certain dollar amount or more, they require that the contractor have a certain percentage of hours devoted to apprenticeship labor. And so I've been discussing this with both city of St. Petersburg attorneys. I've been reaching out to Broward County. They have a similar ordinance. I've spoken with, with, with Mr. Vera's help, representatives of the local labor unions, as well as representatives of ABC, which is, you know, the non-union labor trade group. And, and what I have found is the issues that people tend to focus on is what that percentage of hours should be, what the dollar threshold should be, whether it's possible to write the ordinance in such a way that rather than penalize someone who doesn't comply, you incentivize those who do comply. And then also, these ordinances typically have within them the ability to waive the requirement if you've made a good faith effort to hire apprentices but have been unable to meet the hour, the hour requirement or the percentage. So, you know, and then kind of clarifying that good faith language. I've had, I've received several suggestions from those in the industry. And again, it's, I want to get it right, and our office has been very busy. I didn't want to ask for a lot of additional time, but I thought, you know, one month would be a reasonable amount of time to bring you back a draft ordinance for you to discuss. I don't, I don't suggest that you should be ready to adopt it. I, I think it would be appropriate to, to bring it to you at that time, and then you can discuss it, and then we can move forward from there. So I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Councilman Vera, the motion, go ahead, sir.
Thank you, sir. I, I thank you, Andrew, for your hard work on this. I know that your office is very, very busy, and we appreciate your hard work. You know, this is something I've been working on for a long time, almost a year. This is a very, very important subject. I, I, I'm going to talk on it for a few minutes because I think this is very, very important. I know that Ms. Zelman wanted more time on this, and I'm fully acceptable to that. In my private practice, I am the king of extensions, and so I'm, I'm totally fine with that. But I just wanted to bring up this issue here today because we, we've been, I, I've been working on this for almost a year now with different stakeholders, and a couple of months ago, we kicked it up to legal, because I think it's, it's kind of ready to go. But this is an issue that requires a lot of care and a lot of time. Starting in, probably, I'm thinking January or February of two thousand twenty, I reached out to the parties to do this the right way, and I began to, to meet with representatives of labor organizations as well as a representative from ABC. We would all meet together, probably had six, seven, eight meetings. I've always believed that in working on an ordinance like this, we need to be collaborative and reach out, reach out to people and put people in the same room who often disagree. That's important. That's particularly important in light of the litigation going on right now with St. Peter over their ordinance. A, a, a long time ago, I began to look at that issue, obviously. It's pivotal that we take a stand for apprenticeships for working families while being consistent with Florida law and avoiding, if we can, litigation. I want to be clear, this is initiative about apprenticeships. The St. Petersburg lawsuit has a lot more points of distinction with ours, as that initiative was on apprenticeships and other issues. We believe that this is an initiative as to be written that will be consistent with Florida law and improve the lives of a lot of people. I, I think that's very, very important. Presently, right now, we have some workforce development components for encouragement in the city for points. Ms. Zelman, when I asked her about this, eight, nine months ago or so, had, had pointed some of those out to me, and I appreciate that. But I believe on a policy basis, we need to do more, much more than mere points. I think that this, the, the president's intent of, I think, is ten points. We can do better, a lot better. And, and the good news is, I, I've had a meeting with Mayor Castor on this, and I'm not going to speak on behalf of the administration. But I know that we have a friend in the mayor on this issue. I met with the mayor, gosh, maybe a, a week or two on it. You know, there's a few principles that I want to see in this ordinance, and I think that we could do these in ways that are all consistent with Florida law and avoid unnecessary litigation. First, where we, we, you know, in the meetings that, that I've had with ABC and with labor unions, we're looking at doing this for larger contracts, that is, over a million dollars. We're not looking at a burdening small businesses or smaller contracts with this. Let's look at the larger contracts. We want to make sure that these are Florida state-certified apprenticeships, so that they're good quality. We want to have, and, and it's something that I want to see, which is some sort of a threshold. We talked about fifteen percent. We don't have unanimity in, in, in that regard yet, but some sort of a push or mandate for that, which is going to be per project, not per task, as we've talked about in some of our meetings. And we've had some disagreements on some of those issues, but there's been issues that we've had agreements on. We have to get a good definition of good faith compliance if we have a mandate. Something that I know our, our friends in ABC have talked about as well, we need to make sure that we have common sense in this initiative. Sometimes government means well, but is devoid of common sense. Let's have common sense. And obviously, we want to make sure that, that we, in our contracts, promote the Tampa values of diversity. That means making sure that all parts of our community get the benefit of these programs. That means diversity. That means accountability from city council. We, we obviously have choices of going forward. You know, we can choose to monitor the St. Petersburg litigation and play it safe to, to, to an extreme, to a fault. We don't know how long this litigation is going to go. If this is litigation that's going to go to a jury trial, we could be waiting for another year or two because of COVID. That, to me, is not a viable option. We should move forward with this ordinance in a way that is collaborative with all of the parties, like we've been doing for almost a year right now, but with vigor and full knowledge and knowing that we're doing the right thing. I, I think we can go forward in a collaborative way that is consistent with wanting to help out working families, as I'll talk about, be, be consistent with Florida law. And obviously, in this regard, we're, we're in great hands with our, our attorneys. I, I just want to talk about briefly about what this ordinance means. This, to me, is a really, really, really important issue. I, I've been passionate about this for a while, but it's an important issue that has to be done right. That's why I've been, you know, meeting with all these folks for almost a year, because we have to do this right. To do this right, it takes a lot of work, which obviously my office has been putting in the work. This proposal will expand access to vocational training. That's so important. We take a young person, as, as many of these people in these programs are young, and put them on a path to the middle class, to better wages, to better healthcare, to better retirement security. They, they can be put on a path to becoming a steelworker, a welder, a carpenter, an electrician, a plumber, a pipe fitter. It affirms the idea that to make it, you don't necessarily have to go to college, you know? And, and we hear a lot about calls for social justice. We hear a lot about calls for economic opportunity here within the city. This ordinance does that. If you, if you want to promote social justice, this is your opportunity. If you want to fight that school-the-prison pipeline and give young people a choice, this is your program. This is your chance. We have an economy where unemployment has gone up about three times in the last several months. This is a good opportunity to combat that. And if you want a city to take up values of, of promoting work and working people, then this is certainly something that does that. You know, a, a lot of this, people talk about unions. A lot of people don't know that a majority of state-certified apprenticeships don't come from unions. Don't come from unions. I, I've, I've done the tour. I've done the tour a couple of times for these apprenticeship programs. I know, I think Councilman Goots has, and maybe others. I've encouraged council members to do that. Again, I'm, I'm proud to say that we have support in this endeavor from Mayor Castor. She's supportive of this idea. Details are being worked out, but the mayor has been supportive. And I, I thank the mayor. I thank her administration, our, our hard-working city attorneys for putting this issue forward and, and for supporting us in my office in, in, in this endeavor. I don't, again, speak for the mayor, but, but I, I think that's important. And, and so many other issues. You know, we got waves of retirements that are going to be coming forward in these skilled trades within our city of Tampa. That's something that's so important. And then one last issue, which is a larger issue, which is, we always hear about our city being talked about being a magnet for our best and our brightest. We, we always hear that term from a lot of folks, and we want that. But there's an inference about that term that's always bothered me, which is the idea that, that we want folks with masters from, from Emory or Notre Dame, or masters from, you know, to come here, or masters from UT or, or USF or whatever, to come here and work as engineers, architects, CPAs, et cetera, white-collar professions. And, and God knows, we want that. But doesn't the best and the brightest also include those who, who don't have white collars? Doesn't the best and the brightest include those who work with their hands, who are welders or steelworkers or electricians? I think it does. These folks work hard. They pay their taxes. They have mortgages, raise kids, raise families, contribute to our economy, and they form the heart of the city and the heart of a lot of neighborhoods. And we ought to have policies embedded strongly and vigorously and unapologetically within our contracting process that includes those working families and the stories that they bring forward as our best and the brightest with incentives and, and ideas that move these programs forward to, to grow that in our city, for people to stay in our city, to be welcomed in our city. You know, so that's really why I'm so passionate about this program. We have a tough economy. Let's be there for people right now. And when we bounce back and we get that wave back as a city, let's make sure that our workers get the benefit of that through a, through an apprenticeship ordinance. We got to do better as a city in our, in our ordinances and in our contracting process of encouraging work, of encouraging dignity, self-sufficiency, and a pathway to the middle class. We can be part of this solution as a city. That's why I'm still passionate about this and pushing this forward. Thank you again, Andrew, for your hard work on this. I really appreciate it. And thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman.
Uh, who, yeah, go ahead.
Chairman, you recognize?
Go ahead, Councilman Goots.
You know, Ms. Vera, thank you for inviting me to tour some of the apprenticeship workshops. I knew a lot about apprenticeships because I went to a technical high school, but I learned a few more things as I toured the other facilities. You know, months ago, I made a cry to our CRA of East Tampa to look at a program that would do this such thing, especially be in conjunction with our rehab programs that I, that I say, and still say are failing us. It's not robust enough. That can help clean up our areas, and having an apprenticeship program along in our, in our city and in some of these brighter communities, along with some of these contractors, and along with some of the business can help strengthen our communities. But one thing I can say that I, when I look at a lot of these contracts, there's, there's a couple of buzzwords that stick out to me very, very high, and to me, they're roadblocks in some of our contracts. And I, I, I like the work of the city attorney do a great job, but I, I also want to let them know that, for me, these buzzwords, I don't like in contracts, because to me, they're roadblocks, and they stop the progress of people getting an opportunity. Good faith, you know, what is that? Why, I gave you, I had a hundred bucks, and I was told to give whatever I want to give. Or, I will, I will try, or good faith effort. Those are all buzzwords. You know, real words mean mandate, shall, will. Those are real words to make sure that when you have money on the line, and it's your money, you're dictating how you want your money spent. So I, I would just caution using those type of words, good faith, will try, good effort, because to me, for years and decades, those have been roadblock words to stop progress. And we're on a, on a good track of really moving this city. Hopefully, you know, we, we can look at some of these words and get rid of them, because they are bad words. I know a lot of lawyers like to use those words as cautionary words, but to me, they're bad words, and they, they really hurt certain communities, certain people. So just want to caution that I'm on board with the apprenticeship program, but I, I'm really not on board with that word of good faith. So I just want to make that clear to, to staff, as you're creating this ordinance, because to me, that's not a good word to be used. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And Vera, if I may, Mr. Chair, if, just very briefly to clarify, if I may?
Go ahead.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate it. And, and, and I agree with Councilman Goots, which is, we don't want somebody to go, here's one percent, but I tried. No, I'm, I'm talking about something, you know, the things we've talked about. If somebody gets, let's say the number's fifteen percent, fourteen-point-seven, for example, and they've made what can be, you know, clarified through the legal process as a good faith effort, that's what I'm talking about with common sense. I agree with you one hundred percent, Councilman Goots, that we can't just go, hey, I tried, give me the trophy. I, I, so I agree with you, sir, in, in that regard. Thank you, Mr. Chair, just to clarify.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir.
Very much. Anybody else? All right, hearing none. Thank you very much. So you will come back, Ms. Zelman, at a future date, correct?
I believe I specifically asked for November fifth, but it's certainly up to council if you prefer a different date.
Okay. Any objection to that, November fifth? I don't think we need a motion, because it is a staff report, so.
Yes, you do, sir. Sorry.
I'll move if I may.
Go ahead. Councilman Vera has made the motion. Is there a second?
Okay.
Second for November fifth, for Ms. Zelman to come back with this. All right. Is there any objection to this? Any objection, hearing none, by unanimous consent, the motion passes for November fifth. All right. Thank you very much. We'll move on to item number fifty-eight. And we have a memo from our Director of Human Resources. If, if she's on the line, if there are any questions on this.
Vera, if I, if I may, I don't have any questions per se. I just, if I may, Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
Thank you very much. No, I just wanted to bring to light some of the things our city is doing on accommodating our workers. I'd move for our first responders and Councilman Goode. Thank you, sir, for including all of our city workers. Thank you for your leadership in that regard, Councilman Goode. On COVID, you know, one of the larger issues, just from a policy perspective, that I see in the future is with workers' compensation and COVID-19, this is going to present such a major issue for our workers in the state of Florida and throughout the United States. Workers, not just our first responders, but people in sanitation for public entities and people in the private sector who are being pulled back to work, working at grocery stores, working with people. And the issue comes, where do they get the COVID? And there's a, there's a good chance that these folks may be sidelined off the job two, three, four, five weeks with long-term consequences to their health from COVID-19, and it came from an industrial workplace-related condition. So, you know, I'm glad to see, from what I understand, that the cities appears to be working well. I'm sure that there's, you know, things that we can move on, et cetera, but I just wanted to have a discussion on that, because this is a major issue of worker dignity and worker safety. We pride ourselves in our workers' compensation systems, which in Florida, I used to do workers' comp law. And, you know, we, in 2003, the legislature, with the help of the then-governor, just tore the heart out of our workers' compensation system. And a couple of years later in the case, Emma Murray, things kind of got back on track to a degree. But we just need to keep our eye on this as worker advocates, as people who want to be there for the men and women who work on the job every day for our city and in the private sector. This is a really important issue for policy, and I hope that Tallahassee does the right thing in taking a look at the workers' compensation statutes on COVID-19. This is the major issue of worker safety and dignity. So I just, I just wanted to bring that to folks' attention. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? Hearing none. Is there anybody else that is going to speak on this item, item 58? All right, hearing none. We'll move on to the next item, which is item 59, a motion by Councilmember Miranda regarding unused funds from councilmembers' allowances and whether they can be allocated for affordable housing. Do we have anybody to speak on this item?
Deputy City Attorney Morris Massey. I submitted a memorandum explaining that in order to do that, there would have to be a motion approved by city council, and then Revenue and Finance would then prepare a financial resolution effectuating that adjustment or change in the budget. If there's any questions, I'm happy to try to respond. Thank you.
All right, Councilman Miranda, this was your motion. Do you have any questions, comments, response? Councilmember Miranda? All right, anybody else?
Mr. Chair. Carlson.
Yes, sir. Carlson, go ahead.
Mr. Massey, as I read it, we can transfer, with a motion of, I mean, with approval by council, we can move in into any fund. Like I mentioned a couple of weeks ago, I want to move mine into the public arts area, and that's allowed as long as we approve it by council, correct?
Yes, sir. You'd have to make a motion, have a motion from city council requesting that change in the budget, and then Revenue and Finance would then come forward with a resolution, a financial resolution amending the budget, which would go back to council at the following next regular meeting.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll make a motion at the end of the meeting. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I, the only reason I made that motion August, I mean, August of 27th was to find out from the legal department the legalities, and they just said that, from what I heard, that as legal, you just got to make the proper motions. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. All right, anybody else?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Goode.
Little clarification. That's every time you want to move money to a different account, correct? Not just a blanked motion, correct?
This is dealing with the allowances provided to each one of you in the city budget. If you want to allocate those funds to another use other than for your travel and operating cost allowance, then you would, then you would ask, you would make a motion, and assuming you have the support of your other members, then Revenue and Finance would then prepare a resolution effectuating that change in the city budget that you're requesting, to allocate your allowance to another, for another purpose in the city budget.
Correct. So that's each time you want to do that, correct? A motion has to be made, correct?
Yes, sir. I mean, you could do it. If you wanted to give up your budget for your entire term, you could, you could ask that that be done. But if you did that, you would not have an allowance any other year while you're in office.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir. Councilman Dingfelder.
Thank you. Maybe either from Dennis, probably a question more to Dennis or to Morris. So perhaps, logistically, maybe the best way to do it is, as we come into the end of the fiscal year, like whatever month, you know, September or something, where we haven't used our money, maybe each council member could take a look at the money they haven't used, and we put together one consolidated motion from all seven of us in terms of, you know, how, how much money we each have left and how we want to allocate it to different places. And that, that way, we're not burdening the administration with lots of individual motions, but we just do it once a year at the end of the year, when we see how much money we have left. Mr. Miranda has all of his money left, then he could, you know, then we could just do it, do it at the end of the year, as opposed to piecemeal.
Okay.
And, Mr. Chairman, it's Martin Shelby, if I can just chime in just very briefly by way of background.
Go ahead.
There was a time when council's budgets were rolled back into the general fund if they were unspent, and Mr. O'Hara can certainly speak to that if he wishes. But what happened was, there was a point in time when the, a previous council made the, took action to say that any unspent funds would roll over into that same district's account. And I believe that's where you stand now. So absent any action of council, your unspent money does not roll back to the general fund. It rolls forward to saying in the same account of your district offices' expenses and budget. And that's my understanding.
This is Morris Massey. I believe you're correct, Mr. Shelby.
Thank you, Morris.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? Hearing none. We go on to item number 60, which is to be received and filed, the 2020 Ethics Office and Ethics Commission Annual Reports.
So moved and resumed file.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilman Goode. Any objections? Hearing none by unanimous consent. That's received and filed. We have come to the end of our agenda. We go to information reports and new business from councilmembers. Councilmember Miranda.
Thank you much. I have two items, Mr. Chairman. One is that I brought up the item about boat docks, and to my real surprise and happiness that the administration, this administration presently is looking not only to improve our boat docks throughout the riverfront, but also to do a complete study of any possibility of waterfront and their uses. I've been informed that a little after I brought that up. So I'm real, I'm going to take that motion. I'm not going to put anything else, because they're looking at, to it. I hope they would bring it up within 30 or 60 days, but that's up to them. But I know they're doing a comprehensive study of the waterfront. I appreciate it very much. So that's one. Number two, my money for whatever it is that I get or supposed to get every month, I'm going to move myself that for a month, from the time I got elected on this term to the end of this term, it all goes back into affordable housing. I don't want any of it.
All right, we have a motion from Councilmember Miranda. Do we have a second?
Second, Carlson.
Second from Councilman Carlson. Roll call vote.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, Martin Shelby. Consistent with Mr. Massey's motion, excuse me, Mr. Massey's memo, I think the motion would be to request the budget officer or whatever the appropriate staff member is to bring back a resolution to allow council to be able to vote on that at a future agenda.
That is technically correct. You have to make the motion and direct or ask for the Revenue and Finance Department to bring back a financial resolution effectuating that change to the city budget.
All right, I move that up. The Revenue and Finance, I bring back a resolution on my account only, that the monies that I have from the time I got elected to the time I finish this term all goes back into whatever fund the city wants to put it into for affordable housing.
And then that, would you like that on November 5th?
That's fine, Mr. Chairman.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
Councilman Carlson, is there any objection to this motion? Hearing none by unanimous consent. The motion passes. Anything else, sir?
No, sir. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Councilman Citro. Councilman Citro, do you have any new business, sir?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair. Thank you very much. At this time, I would like to ask for a city council accommodation to be presented to the 2020 Stanley Cup winners, the Tampa Bay Lightning, and I would like to ask that be presented at our first in-person meeting, hopefully, will be November 5th.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any objection?
Go both.
All right, by unanimous consent, hearing no objection, the motion passes. All right, anything else, sir?
No, thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Councilman Carlson, do you have any new business, sir?
Yes, Mr. Chair. I would, along the same lines as Mr. Miranda's motion, I would like to make a motion to ask the Revenue and Finance Department to bring back a resolution to transfer $5,000 of my city council expense fund to the Arts and Cultural Affairs Department in the city to be used for art in the city council chambers in District 4 for public art.
Would you like that November 5th, same as Miranda's date?
Yes, please. That would be great.
All right, we have a second from Councilmember Miranda. Is there any objection to the motion? Hearing none by unanimous consent, the motion passes. All right, anything else, sir?
Yes, just real quick, I met with some homeless advocates south of Gandy and south Tampa yesterday, and it was a sobering conversation, and I think some of you have had conversations with them as well. I've talked to Chief Bennett, who's an expert on homeless issues, and he's on it with their departments, but their, the numbers they were telling me yesterday, the unofficial numbers are as many as 1,000 homeless people in South Tampa. People don't think about South Tampa as being full of homeless people, and these are not people from somewhere else, but people who have been living in South Tampa and can no longer afford their homes. There are families and kids. And so we know we have a housing crisis throughout the city, but we even have a homeless issue and homeless crisis in South Tampa. And so I appreciate the administration's help in addressing that. I won't pass a motion, but I appreciate their help. Also, thank you all last week for approving the accommodation for Jack Harris. Councilman Citro volunteered to go with me, and he was very, very happy and appreciative, and we told them that it came from all of us. So thank you all for doing that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. Councilman Dingfelder, do you have any new business at this time, sir?
Yes, sir. A couple of items. I believe this coming workshop is our, is our Chapter 27 zoning workshop. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. That's the lengthy one at the end of this one.
Okay. I've been having conversations with Ms. Zelman and some staff people about two items, and I'd like them to include those two items in the discussion at the workshop, and specifically to include these two items. My intent is to include these two items in our next round of Chapter 27 changes. More than a year ago, we all unanimously said we want to expand the front porch ordinance, and then, and then it never happened. We wanted to expand it out of just the RS50 and expand it to all the districts throughout the city, and it never happened. And I understand, you know, Kathy Coyle left, and then we had COVID, et cetera. But I don't want to wait until we go to another round and another round, because that's going to take a while. So I'd like to include the front porch ordinance amendment in this next, in this next cycle that Ms. Zelman and Ms. Post are preparing. So that's my, that's my first motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Please, second was from Councilmember Miranda. Is there any objection? Hearing none by unanimous consent. Motion passes. Go ahead, sir.
And my next one, and I already addressed this with Ms. Zelman, is many years ago, for some reason, city council tied its own hands in regard to Chapter 27 amendments. And what we did is, we basically handed our ordinance authority over to the zoning department and said, you know, "Come back to us every two years with a cycle, a two-year, a one-half year cycle of zoning changes." And what happens is, is sometimes people are, the people in the community will bring a good idea to us that has, that is a change to Chapter 27 that frankly, we could enact within a month or two, but instead, we get told, "Oh, you have to wait for the next cycle. You have to wait for the next cycle." That's, that's now codified in Chapter 27 151. So at the workshop, I'd like us to address Chapter 27 151 and whether or not we want to continue to have our hands tied. A vote on this motion does not mean you vote that you agree with me. It just means that you're willing to discuss it on the October workshop.
Do we have a motion from Councilman Dingfelder? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. Second from Councilman Carlson. Is there any objection to the motion? Hearing none by unanimous consent. The motion passes. Anything?
Thank you, council. Earlier, we had a wonderful report from the Convention Center about all the improvements we're doing there. I brought up the issue about solar, and I'm sure that council, I'm sure all of council would be very excited if we had a major solar project downtown, and the roof of the Convention Center is the logical place for it. So I would ask that staff, including our sustainability officer, as well as the convention staff in Ms. Post, come back to us no later than January. Well, let me, I guess you want a date certain. Why don't we, why don't we say the second, second council meeting in January under staff reports?
That would be, we have a regular meeting on the 14th. Then we're closed for, well, we have the holidays and stuff. The 21st is CRA, and then the 28th is a workshop. So it would have to be January 14th.
I'll go with, I'll go with the 1st in February. What would that be, Mr. Chairman? Thank you.
February 4th at 9:00 a.m.
Okay, let's go to, to 2021 at 9:00 a.m. under staff reports for a report on the feasibility of solar, solar on the Convention Center roof.
Mr. Dingfelder, Councilman?
Yes.
Hi, if I may, if I may add to the conversation before you proceed. This is Carol Post.
Sure.
Hi, I just, I appreciate the interest in that and what you discussed previously during our earlier presentation, and we 100% agree with the efforts to move forward to bring a more sustainable facilities to the Convention Center. That is, in fact, an enormous part of the, the planning that will be underway with the SCANSCA team. In fact, it's incorporated into that capital plan is to incorporate sustainability features throughout the facility, and I only mention it with respect to perhaps aligning the timing of our report back to you with the design, with the timing of the design plan that SCANSCA will be proceeding with.
Well, so I think it's, I appreciate that, Carol, and I appreciate that you guys are way ahead of us, but why don't we do this procedurally? How about, we'll leave it on the agenda for February 4th. On February 4th, you can come back and say, "Hey, guess what? SCANSCA is going to be coming back to us, you know, in April or May or whatever," and then you can just give us an update in that regard. So let, let's just do it on February 4th under staff reports.
That'd be great.
And then, and then it'll be in your control, Carol.
No problem. Sounds good. Thank you very much.
I speak on that, Mr. Chairman.
Do we have a second?
Second, already second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Councilmember Miranda. Any objection?
I think it's a great, great idea. I think Mr. Rimmer sent us a report on that item, where it had two or three areas of whether you want to rent, whether you want to buy, whether you want to sublease, and I don't know what I've done with mine, but I know I saw it about two or three weeks ago, maybe a little further back. But I appreciate the, the effort and, uh, supporting that 100%.
All right, any objection to the motion? Hearing none, the motion passes. Anything else, Councilman Ding Felder?
And the last item is this credit card item. Um, um, Mr. O'Hara got very excited when I, when I, uh, he and I talked about this the other day, about the opportunity of generating an additional two or $3 million from credit card fees. Um, I don't think it's punitive, frankly. Um, I think it happens all across our society, including various parts of, other parts of government. Um, I don't think that non-credit card units should, users should be supporting credit card users. Um, I think it should be, you know, pay, pay, pay as you go. So anyway, um, but, but that's neither here nor there. I'd just like a staff report. Um, Mr. O'Hara, how much time do you think you'd like, um, before you get a staff report back to us on that credit card issue?
Councilman Ding Felder.
Or Mr. Bennett.
Yeah, so, um, Mr. O'Hara is, uh, not available at the moment, but, um,
That's fine.
I think you give it 30 days.
Okay, that sounds a little, that, that sounds a little tight, but why don't we go with, uh, the beginning of December? I'll, I'll cut, I'll cut Dennis.
Beginning of December would be, uh, December 3rd under staff report.
Beautiful.
Okay, is there a second to this motion?
I'll second that, Mr. Chairman. May I speak on it?
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
I, I would like, and in that report, if I can find out so I can know what the numbers are. How many, uh, what's the percentage of people that pay by check or other means other than credit cards? I think that's very important to know.
Yeah, and, and Mr. Miranda, um, I, I look forward to that report as well with those specifics. When Dennis and I were talking, he said, we accept credit cards all across the city in a variety, a wide variety of, of contexts. Uh, I think people pay their water bills with credit cards, uh, sometimes and-
That's right.
Yeah, it's, it's-
We gotta find out what's going on with the rest of the city.
Yeah, so he'll tell us what departments, what the revenue is from credit cards and, uh, give us his recommendation. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Miranda.
All right, uh, is there any objection on the motion? Hearing none by unanimous consent, the motion passes. Thank you very much. Anything else, Councilman Ding Felder?
I'm good today. Thank you.
Councilman Goos, do you have anything for new business?
Yes, sir. I have a couple of items, sir. Uh, number one, uh, on November 12th, we have what I call the trailblazer of this community, especially the black community, who will be, uh, chairing his last board meeting. Commissioner Leslie Les Miller will be retiring. Uh, he served in the Florida State Senate, State of Representatives, and Commissioner NSC Council. I let this council's approved accommodation present to, uh, Commissioner Miller on November 12th. And also the mayor's office will give a key to the city and a proclamation as well. Uh, and, and lastly, if we could find some type of landmark, uh, for Mr. Miller, Mr. Miller's name could be, uh, erected on. Uh, again, he's done a fabulous job as our leader for our community, especially for the black community.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
All right, we have a motion from Councilman Goos, second from Councilman Miranda. Any objections? All right, by unanimous consent, hearing no objection, the motion passes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, sir. Uh, I have received several calls in reference to Williams Park. It's in the east Tampa area, uh, in the, uh, close to the Northview Hills community. Uh, I asked for a tour of that building because several parents have been calling about that building. I went out to that building. Apparently, uh, maybe four or five years ago, maybe less, uh, the previous council, uh, elected to, uh, give funds for a 750 square foot building. Uh, to me, I thought that was just too small, but I guess at the time, that's what they got. I went out there. I see several problems with the building when I went out there. The handicap rails, uh, are not tight at all. They're loose hanging, uh, gutters, uh, two tones of color to the building. Uh, the AC unit is not working inside of the building. The building had to be put off in extra two weeks. Uh, I'd just like a report, uh, from Contract Services and the Recreation Department on what's going on with this building. Why is it not ready? Why are these things have not been taken care of? I mean, money was put into, and I understand $500,000 on this, correct or not? But to me, 750 square feet and $500,000 for a building, that should have been immaculate for 750 square feet. So I need a report back from the Recreation Department and Contract Service in reference to this building and what's being done to get this building ready. Cause I've seen a lot of things that are, just, just don't seem right as I did my tour. And I suggest that other, maybe at-large council members go and take a look at the building as well.
All right, when would you like that back?
Second. Oh, sorry.
I, I, I think it should only take them maybe two weeks to come out with a staff report on that.
All right, two weeks would be October 15th under staff reports. Uh, I heard a second from Councilman, um, Vera. Is there any objection?
Um, and if I may, oh, yeah, it, yes, sir, that, you know, those improvements were passed as part of the fiscal year 2018 budget. Um, and, uh, and, um, and hopefully these, uh, issues can be addressed and whatnot. But that was a, a, a great improvement for the, uh, east Tampa, uh, area, those Williams Park improvements. I know we, that year, we also passed in that budget Villa Brothers Parks improvements at the View Tampa, uh, Rec Center. So I, I, I hope that, uh, this can be taken care of. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. Again, Mr. Chairman, thank you, Ms. Vera, for that clarification. Uh, again, it's just a lot of things that I see that's wrong with the building that having this money put towards, uh, addition is just not being done. And again, thank you, gentlemen, on your behalf.
All right, is there any objection to the motion? Hearing none by unanimous consent, the, uh, motion passes. Anything else, sir?
That's it, sir. Thank you.
Councilman Vera, do you have anything under new business?
Yes, yes. Uh, you know, I, I don't, I'm gonna make a motion later on, uh, for, um, uh, funds within my, um, uh, account. But, um, I, I also wanted to thank, I know tomorrow we have a retirement get-together uh, for Debbie Rotolo, who's worked with the city for 42 years. And, you know, she's always the individual who works between city council, staff and the administration. And, you know, during my time as chair, Debbie was just such a ple, and she still is, such a pleasure to work with. She's such a nice lady. And, um, you know, when, when, when you work with an office like that and you're the face of that office for people who contact that office, that is so important. You need to have a person who is a hard worker, who can be trusted, who, um, uh, is, uh, gonna put that good foot forward. And Debbie has always, always accomplished that. And she's, she's just a, a, a hard worker. And my reckoning is, she's also a really good person. So, um, I just wanted to give a shout out to Debbie and I know we all, uh, agree with that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. And, uh, for, for myself here, I'm glad that, uh, Councilman Miranda brought up what he did regarding the unused funds. I see that Councilman Carlson has already made a motion, whatnot. I don't know what I have in the account, but I'll look and see. And then I'll, I'll make a motion at the, at a future meeting to reallocate those to something worthy. Um, you know, just as has already been mentioned within the council, uh, with the few council members. And, uh, and I'll echo what Councilman Vera said about Debbie Rotolo. She, she will be missed after so many years at the city of Tampa, but she's wonderful to work with. Um, and, uh, we will definitely miss her and wish her all the best in the future. Uh, that's it. If there's nothing else-
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, yes.
Has this coun, has this council given Debbie a, uh, a co, a commendation?
I was gonna, Mr. Chairman, may I answer that? This, I made that motion, uh, sometime back and the commendation will be given to her tomorrow at 12 o'clock in the eighth floor of the city office.
Uh, thank, thank you, Ms. Miranda. I just wanted to make sure we didn't drop that ball. Appreciate it.
I will, I'll add on the agenda for October 27th.
That's right. Um, do we have a motion to receive and file?
Slow move, Mr. Chairman.
Motion from Councilman Miranda. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Councilman Goos. If there's no other, is there no objection? All right, hearing none by unanimous consent. We, uh, have received and filed the documents. Remember, we start back at 5:01 PM. It's gonna be a long night, so get rested. We'll be returning. Thank you.